Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this September 17th. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. A number of really, really interesting items we're going to be able to talk about this afternoon. And it's a gray day out there, so what better place to be but the City Commission meeting? So let us begin with our communications to the city, the Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee. Is there anyone here to represent that task force? There was a motion made by the Vice Chair, Peter Partington, with regard to recommends funding for the updating utility strategic master plan in the 2025 budget. I believe that's been contained in the 2025 budget?
Yeah, in the water and sewer budget, there's $3 million for that strategic plan.
Okay, so we have already responded to that and we have taken care of that. The Historic Preservation, the Historic Preservation Board, the city of Fort Lauderdale has, there were two motions that were made. One was with regard to historic properties that may be demolished in the future recommends that the city identify a space on the current site of the police department to separate it out and create like a little village or a village green in which historic properties, homes can be relocated and create a set of attraction to that area as we consider building some kind of housing project on that same site. And then there's a recommendation that the Bark site be used as a public garden, but who owns the Bark site? I thought that was the county, right?
County.
So we could certainly send that recommendation over to them. I think the county is looking to build something on there like affordable housing, but who knows when that will take place. But I believe it's been handed out to all of us, the recommendation regarding the historic homes relocation project. And at your leisure, please, please look through this. Sounds like an interesting idea. Any questions with regard to that? They're being done. And then finally, the Fire Rescue Advisory Committee. I understand it's a moot point at this point. Mr. Brown is here to represent the committee, but I understand that the recommendation has now been fulfilled, so we appreciate the committee moving forward on that. Okay, moving on to the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team and the Cortada Foundation to present before us. Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Why don't you come up to the podium, please? Push the button at the bottom of the microphone. Great, and pull it towards you. Great, thank you.
Testing.
Yes.
All right, I think we have some slides here. How do I advance this? Someone will bring those up in a moment.
Oh, okay. You are Alyssa?
Alyssa, yes.
Alyssa, I'm sorry. Alyssa Jones with the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team and the Xavier Cortada Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you.
You live right near my sister.
Oh, great. Laurel Springs. So, good afternoon and thank you to Mayor Trantales, Vice Mayor Glassman, and Commissioners Herbst, Beasley-Pitman, and Sturman, and to Susan Leon for the opportunity to present a collaborative initiative to you today between the Xavier Cortada Foundation and the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team to increase climate change awareness and empower our youth to fight for their future. My name is Alyssa Jones and I am the Vice Chair of the Broward Sierra Group. I'm here today representing our junior team members as they are in school, working hard and getting good grades, of course, but I have their express permission to speak for them on this occasion. So just a little bit about the Sierra Club and our junior team. Founded in 1892, the Sierra Club is the most enduring and influential grassroots environmental organization in the United States. It has grown and evolved dramatically during its more than 125 years of existence and uses the collective power of our millions of members and supporters to defend everyone's right to a healthy world. The Florida Sierra Club chapter has 17 all-volunteer groups and our Broward Sierra Group has well over 4,000 members and supporters. However, we recognize that the youth of today and tomorrow will be stuck with the disastrous consequences of man-made climate change and governmental policy that has failed to address it seriously and expeditiously in the past 40 years. So we were very fortunate two years ago to come across an outspoken 15-year-old student, Anna Gaire, who was writing letters to the editor of our local newspapers about her concern for the environment and we grabbed her up as the inaugural chair of the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team. The junior team is a group of high school students working to preserve the environment through advocacy, outreach, and education. They work to support environmentally conscious political candidates. They educate students around the county at school meetings. They have petitioned for the right to clean water in Florida and are beginning a campaign to bring renewable energy into all Broward County schools. Some of the team even traveled to Tallahassee this year to lobby for environmental bills. At this time, there are over 45 junior team members and counting, and we are counting on you to get some of the Fort Lauderdale high school students to join them. I do have some flyers in both English and Spanish to leave you with after the presentation and our junior team has asked if you're able that you kindly distribute these into the Fort Lauderdale schools that you work with. And now to the main event, the underwater art project. The Broward Sierra Group Junior Team is very excited to collaborate with the distinguished Xavier Cortada Foundation to bring the underwater project to Broward County schools. Their mission alongside the Cortada Foundation is to empower youth to become active participants in sea level rise awareness and climate advocacy, demonstrating the value of being a climate advocate and illustrating the critical importance of the youth voice in affecting real change. They are determined to bring the project to as many Broward middle schools and high schools as possible and they need your help to get the word out. On behalf of the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team, I am so very pleased to introduce Adam Roberti, Executive Director of the Cortada Foundation, to tell you more about the underwater. You're welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I'm going to show you a couple of slides. These were Alyssa's so you can see a little bit about the junior team, but I really want to just start with having you guys understand, everybody in this room, understand the situation that we are facing here in Broward County. It's not just Fort Lauderdale. So if you look at the screen, what you see is a GIF, so a moving image that shows you what six feet of sea level rise does to Broward County. Obviously, you can see Fort Lauderdale in there. You can see it turn blue. If we do not...
Is that politically or with water?
Unfortunately, it's with water and we are expecting this by the end of this century if we do not stop burning fossil fuels globally.
This is six feet of extra sea level?
From today, with six feet of sea level rise, this is what Broward County looks like because we are built on limestone rock. So it's not just coming from the Atlantic, it's also coming from the Everglades and straight through the aquifer. And people are not understanding this reality in South Florida.
This doesn't include the king tides, I assume?
This does not even include the king tides, exactly. And as everybody in this room knows, because of the climate crisis, our oceans are warming and that means that hurricanes are getting stronger as well. So over the course of the next 75 years, when we are expecting this amount of sea level rise, we will also be seeing stronger hurricanes. We will also be seeing our fresh drinking water, our aquifer, salinated. We will see extreme lethal heat, which we are experiencing year after year these summers. And so we collectively need to wrap our heads around what this means and how we are addressing this because to date, we have been failing in terms of adaptation and mitigation. We are not effectively planning and preparing for this, which means if we continue on with business as usual, thousands, hundreds of thousands of people that live here will get left behind. FEMA is not going to be able to save everyone. And so the purpose of myself being here as the Executive Director of the Cortada Foundation with the Broward Sierra Group and the junior team is not to ring the alarm bells and say, you know, the sky is falling. We're not trying to, you know, make it sound like an apocalypse or a catastrophe, although it could be. We are here to provide a solution. We are here to help you guys because you, as the elected officials, need to figure out how you are planning for this, for septic tanks, for flood insurance, for the economy in the decades to come. And the biggest issue with the climate crisis is that we need to be thinking in the decades to come, not in four-year election cycles. And that is in large part why we are not addressing it effectively. So scientists and economists around the world understand us here in Broward and Miami-Dade, where I currently live. I'm born and raised in Hollywood. I went to public school, went to South Broward High School, but then I went, go Bulldogs. There we go. But I went down to U M. to study marine science and biology. There we go, go Canes, go Canes. And it was in that process that I started to understand, wow, okay, nobody has any idea what's going on and we're not, we're not acting accordingly to the science. And so, yeah, and actually through, I'm going to get there, but through our website, you can type your individual address to your house and you find out exactly how high above sea level your home is. You find your elevation. But what I want to, what I want to say is that we need to recognize that this is an issue and so most of you have probably not heard of the Xavier Cortada Foundation. Xavier Cortada is the first ever artist in residence of Miami-Dade County, appointed by Mayor Danielle Levine-Cava. If you were watching PBS NewsHour yesterday, you actually might have seen our feature, which is all about this underwater project that we are trying to bring in a larger way to Fort Lauderdale. Xavier is the only artist in the world to have created art at the North Pole and at the South Pole. This was 2007, 2008, where he was trying to sound the alarm for climate change, for sea level rise, for biodiversity loss. And when he was there, the scientists in Antarctica handed him ice and said, this is the ice that is melting and threatening to drown your home. He's only ever lived in Miami. That is home. He took that ice and he created a series of Antarctic ice paintings. He let the ice melt and it is depicting the horrors to come because it's not about Antarctica, it's about where Antarctica is going and Antarctica is coming here. And if he was a regular artist, he could just put that, that painting or those, that series up in a museum. He has done that. But he, he got creative and what he did is he created an entire campaign, started in 2018, called the Underwater Homeowners Association. The underwater HOA had people find out their home's elevation above sea level and then put a yard sign in front of their house as a way of sparking conversations because as you guys know, if you saw a yard sign in front of someone's house, you would expect it to either be a political yard sign saying vote for somebody or a for sale yard sign saying this house is for sale. This is a number eight. Why is a number eight there? What does that mean? This is strange. The point is that it's weird enough to make you do a double take and ask and be curious so that you and your neighbor, who might not agree politically, can have a conversation about something that affects both of you. And this is where this project aims to bridge divides. We are very polarized right now, especially when it comes to the climate crisis. And we need to understand that this is just data, this is just science, these are just facts. And this project is all about community engagement. So Xavier, this was back in 2018, worked with a bunch of local high schools to paint intersections with the elevation of those intersections. Again, you're driving by, why is there a number seven here? What is this? Like I have never seen, oh, there we go. This was not here before. And it makes sea level rise, which is invisible, something that is impossible to ignore. And I know you guys know how bad flooding is here in Fort Lauderdale. You know, you've seen what just regular rains can do, but imagine when the groundwater is high. Imagine when there is storm surge.
Can you put your microphone on and could you speak into it, please?
That eight, was that what eight feet sea level rise would have been? Is that what that eight was?
That eight means that that house is at eight feet above sea level?
If eight feet rise, that's where...
At eight feet rise, that's where the water would be.
And this is at seven feet rise, this would be at sea level, is that what...
Exactly, that's correct.
Okay.
And one of the things that this project had people understand is that as you get further away from the ocean, further away from the Atlantic, you feel safer, but you actually may be more vulnerable. This was on Killian Drive in Pinecrest where there were multiple intersections painted and the number... and the numbers started to go up as you got further west, but then it started to go back down, because, as you guys know, we have the Everglades on the other side. There is a ridge. And so this started to really get people to understand the reality of the situation, and now we are in the process of working with the University of Miami College of Engineering and the Miami-Dade County Parks and Recreation Department to place sustainable concrete made out of seawater, not freshwater, sustainable concrete elevation sculptures in every single Miami-Dade County park. So this has already been approved. We are working on it now. We've already installed a bunch of them, and they are site-specific. So if a park like Matheson Hammock in Coral Gables is three feet above sea level, it gets a big number three with a QR code. And we are putting these portals to climate education and information across all of Miami-Dade County. Now, in Broward, we have done a lot of work starting this year. So the Broward County Government, the Cultural Division, and the Resilience Department funded us to come and bring this underwater project to ten different schools across Broward County, five middle, five high. Where Xavier and I go, we give these presentations, these big assemblies with all of these students. We get them excited, we get them inspired, because the idea is not to have it be doom and gloom. It's not about, we're going underwater, we're going to die. It's about, we have a problem, but we have the solutions to solve the problem. We're only going to achieve those solutions, though, if we work together. We cannot do this individually. So I'm going to just flip through a few of these pictures here. You can see that at South Plantation, they're at nine feet above sea level. We created elevation murals at every single one of these schools. There's Nova, Beachside Montessori Village. Driftwood Middle is where I went to middle school, so this one was particularly meaningful. Did you go to Driftwood as well? No? Not three? Two for three, that's okay. West Pine Middle School, Silver Lakes Middle School, Silver Trail Middle School, Dillard High School. So there is a little bit of Fort Lauderdale representation here. There's South Broward, that's in the cafeteria, number nine. And Sheridan Technical High School, which is actually where my sister went. She just graduated from there last semester, and she just started at U M. this semester. So the idea through this whole process is that we are trying to generate these community climate ambassadors that create their own yard sign, that bring it home. As you guys can imagine, the kids do this, and then they go home, and their parents are like, what the heck is that? So now it sparks a conversation with the parents. You bring it and put it in front of your house. You have friends, neighbors, family who come over, and now they're talking about this. And when you scan the QR code, when you go there, you're able to see action steps of what you can do. Some of you guys may have seen this bus flying around Broward County over the course of this year. I don't think it's currently operating anymore, but it was for quite a while. We were at Water Matters Day, again, as part of our initiative with Broward County, and all of this Broward underwater momentum led to this event here in Fort Lauderdale at the African American Cultural Center and Research Library. This brought a lot of people from the community around. You can see Xavier there, speaking, talking about this issue, getting folks involved. And here, I just want you to see the little video of what happens when you scan the QR code. So you can see the GIF, you can see what happens to Broward and Dade. You can click the Find Your Elevation button, so immediately, when you do that and you type your elevation, this becomes a personal issue. One of the biggest problems with climate communications is that folks feel like it's about polar bears, or they'll be dead by then. No, it's about you. Your house is at four feet above sea level. What are you doing about it? You want your property value to maintain its value. What are you doing? So how can you get involved? How can you raise awareness? By growing the installation across the county. What elected officials can you talk to to urge policies that will protect our families and our communities? So step two here, as you can see, is to contact lawmakers. We want people to get in touch, get volunteer hours in with local organizations. So we created a list of local orgs that people can join and work with. We did this for Broward and for Dade. And then we created something called the Underwater Intel Online Resource Hub with podcasts and movies and video recommendations and blah, blah, blah. So that is-- This is how this underwater project has grown to date. Here, you can actually see that Fort Lauderdale is going to be receiving some underwater elevation art very soon. This number four mural is going to be placed right there at the Governmental Center parking garage. All of this has been approved through the county. And then a number four metal cutout sculpture that's going inside Broward County Government Center. And we are here today with the Broward Sierra Group because, as great as this project is and as much recognition as it's been getting, it doesn't succeed without local buy-in, without local support, and so we want to take this project and bring it in to more schools. We want more people to get involved, because at the end of the day, if you guys are going to pass legislation, if you guys are going to create a budget that actually adapts to sea level rise in the way that it needs to, you need your community, you need the buy-in. You need your residents and your constituents to understand why you're spending the money the way that you're spending it. And so that's where this project is a mechanism, a tool, for you guys to bring people together, to be on the same page, not be divided about climate and sea level rise, understand we are ground zero, we need to lead in this effort, and we actually do have the resources if we are strategic about it. You can just see a little bit about how this has been in the news, recognition that it's gotten. And I think with that, I will-- I'm probably at time, so I'll leave you with my contact information. I'll take any questions if you have it, but just know that you have a lot of young people in the Broward Sierra Group that are eager to help and to advance this initiative. You have the Cortada Foundation, who is eager to grow this. And actually, just within the last couple of weeks, the city of Pembroke Pines has been in discussions with me about creating a big mural at their city hall, which is looking very likely, and also the city of Sunrise is looking to create a big mural. So this is something that we're hoping cities buy into and want to help advance. And I think that's it for me. So thank you very much.
All right, great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Sure.
Did you want to add to it? Sure, sure, absolutely.
This is not my business card. I'm going to give you an elevation card. If you want to find your elevation, you can scan the QR.
So Adam, if you could just stay at the podium for a second. So your message is about-- Your message is about protecting your property, your family, your pets, and all of that. But what messaging are you doing about trying to combat climate change? Is that incorporated in your program?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when it comes to mitigating climate change and actually lessening this, we want people to understand that we need to stop burning fossil fuels as soon as possible, and we need to transition toward renewable energy as soon as possible. Now, the individual person doesn't have that much power when it comes to having FPNL move us over to solar or to nuclear or to wind, but we do need people to understand that this is an issue so that our state and federal government can help transition us away from that. So a big part of it is having people understand what they can do as an individual to make the climate crisis better, meaning that map that I showed you, which had six feet of sea level rise. If we together brought down our greenhouse gas emissions, it doesn't have to look like that. It could look like two to three feet of sea level rise by the end of this century, but we're just not on track for that. So if we have people understand that this is not inevitable, this is what we're heading toward, then I think that there's a little bit more of a motivation for us to take action now.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions, Adam? Or, Elisa?
I actually just have a few comments, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you. So I wanted to say thank you. Actually, it was a pleasure. I had the opportunity to be at the Fifth Annual Awards Banquet this past Saturday evening, and I want to say congratulations to all of you for the work that you do. It was a pleasure to meet those young people. It was actually very inspirational. As a former teacher, I so appreciate you working with these kids, because that's our future. So congratulations for working with them. They were very inspirational, so intelligent, so committed. I did have the pleasure of working with Mr. Cortada years ago. I actually worked for the Broward County Cultural Division years ago.
Awesome.
So there's a lot of connections here, and I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for educating our young people. Again, it's very inspirational for what they're doing. I for sure will be putting all of this information in my district newsletters and emails, and we'll be contacting the schools in our district as well, sharing with them the flyer and doing everything we can. And if there's anything else I can do, please make sure that you let me know so that we're able to do that kind of outreach. Again, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you do to protect and preserve our natural environment. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. So what number are you putting on your building?
That's a secret. I keep telling people in my condominium that probably in the not-too-distant future, we'll actually might be oceanfront.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll see what that does to our property values, but I'm not so positive about the neighborhood to the east of us, but one day I might be an oceanfront building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it. We can never hear this message enough times. It's really, really important, so thank you for spreading it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those numbers are a brilliant idea. It brings it on home.
It does.
I love that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll send a follow-up email and see if there's any other ways that we can collaborate together.
Okay, good.
And maybe you and Commissioner Sturman can watch the game this Saturday together.
There we go. Go Canes!
Okay. Speaking of water, business two, talking about getting an update on our Prospect Lake Clean Water Center. Alan, do you want to introduce this?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In February of 2023 is when we approved the agreement for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, and this is intended to give you an update of the progress that we've had. We have a number of members of the team who are here, but I'm going to start by turning over to Mark Janey, who is going to give you an overview of the progress we've made so far, and then we'll talk a little bit about the next steps as we're moving towards becoming fully operational by September of 2026.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back, seeing you. It's actually been about a year since we were here last, giving an update on the project, and, you know, a great story to tell. Things have been going really well. To begin, I'd actually like to introduce Joey Pedrone. We hired Joey to effectively act as a general manager of the project. He's based here in South Florida. He's day-to-day working on the project, so I thought it'd be great to have Joey kind of give the update on the construction project itself, so--
All right, very good. Come on, Joey.
You're from--
Mark.
From what company?
Prospect Lake Project Company.
Oh, that, okay, that's the name, okay.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to give an update. So kicking off with a great set of progression pictures here, it's been about a year since we break ground. You can see there, November 2023, that's Hawkins Road, and that's essentially where the site is, and it's just trees and grass. And you could see it progressed throughout the months, all the way to April 2024. It's a massive change in the last year. We've been really busy over the last year. Moving on into this year, you could see the pipe going into the ground. I have some more better pictures as we move along, but all the way up to August, it is a full-blown construction site at this point. So great pictures here of the site. Here's some very recent pictures from a drone. We fly a drone every Thursday to capture the worksite. This is our home base. This is where all the craft personnel and supervisors, and we all sit here. We have our meetings here. We have our weekly meetings with the city in these trailers. It's a great view of Fort Lauderdale in the background, of course, with the rain, and a great drone shot we do every Thursday to capture our progress. Here's a site layout. This is from above. You could see, right by Gator Lake, you could see the layout of the site with our proposed parking and our admin building and so forth. We'll all be right there. Just to the north is the residences, north of Gator Lake.
North is to the top?
North is to the top, yes.
So everybody, north is to the top. Right.
So the beginning of this project was a lot of dirt, moving in and moving back, moving out and moving back in. So we started with excavating a huge bathtub so we can lay all the pipe in the ground. We've essentially completed our excavation, and we're in the process of backfilling, since all the piping is falling in the ground. You can see the picture up at the left where we started and all the pipe in the ground to the right. So interesting topic just before this one was the site elevation. We are at six feet at the site, and we're increasing plus seven. So we'll be at plus thirteen at the very end.
Well, you heard Adam. It has to be at least six feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
The site is at six right now, and we will end the site at plus seven above that. So like we talked earlier, a lot of pipe going into the ground, about 37,000 feet total. We're at 27,000 of that, 37 into the ground. Electrical lots, miles and miles of conduit. 138,000 linear feet are going in. You know, we chose this picture up on the upper hand to show the quality of the contractor. I've been building power plants and sites like this for 20 years, and I've yet to see the kind of quality that I see in this kind of electrical work. This is really-- You know, if you're into construction, this is a piece of art when you look at that conduit layout on the upper left-hand corner. So these are two pictures, a picture of our injection wells. Both our main injection well and the monitoring well. These are two rigs, near silent. One is electric, one is diesel. We have no complaints from the neighbors to the north from the noise from these rigs. They're operating 24/7, and they're near silent. So just upcoming, you know, what's next for the project is we're about to complete our underground and backfill. We'll start creating our foundations as equipment arrives later in the fall. So equipment will start arriving throughout the fall and into next year. So this is a permitting update, just a great story here in collaboration with the city and with Broward. You know, the permitting process has been progressing very smoothly with the city, and any challenges we've had, the city staff have been great to work with to overcome. So we actually do have our FDIP permit to construct. It was issued in April of this year, and we're moving forward as a team. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Alan to talk about the optimal corrosion treatment plan.
So when we approved the comprehensive agreement, one of the things that was a known/unknown was OCCT, Optimal Corrosion Treatment. And that's really looking at how the chemicals in the water will impact the distribution pipes and making sure that we're having the right quality at the tap, not just coming out of the plant. And so as part of the lead-in copper rule revision, there's a requirement to do this type of a study. We kicked it off. We did a change order in October 2023 to do a desktop study that gave us direction on where we need to move. And really what it told us is that we need to do a larger pipe loop study. So that's one of the change orders that we will be bringing to you at the next meeting in October. But it's something to make sure that as we are building the system using different technology and changing the chemical composition of the water a little bit, that we are not creating any negative impacts to our distribution system.
So what is that picture in the upper right-hand corner?
That is one of our distribution pipes with severe tuberculosis in it, which has caused over years and years of water going through it and building up corrosion on the inside. These are the pitting areas, and this is in a really bad pipe. This is what causes us to have problems with clearing bacteria when we have boil water notices going into place.
So what's the material? What's the pipe made out of? Is it copper? Is PVC?
That one, I'm not sure if it's ductile iron or cast iron. We have both--
So it's metal?
--in our systems.
It's a metal.
It's a metal pipe, yes.
Okay.
And if we don't look at the water chemical composition properly, it can actually increase the degree of tuberculosis and impacts to the pipe in those older systems. So we don't want that to happen. Okay, and--
That's like pitting. Is that what it is?
Essentially, yes.
Like bacteria could hide?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'll now turn over to Mark Janey to talk a little bit about PFAS. This was another one of the things that we knew was coming, but the regulations were not in place when we signed the agreement. not in place when we signed the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Don a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so this plan is going to, the transmission is going to go back to where Five Ash is, and from Five Ash distribute to the city, correct?
That, that is correct.
What's the condition distal to Five Ash, the, the piping throughout the city? How, how's, how is that? I mean, is this indicative of all the pipes in the city, the upper right-hand corner? Go back one slide if you can.
I hope not.
So we, we do look at, I, I can't tell you overall, part of the assessment we do of pipes whenever we do break is looking at them. We, we do have more than 30% of the pipes in the city are 60 years or older, and, and so it is something that we have to deal with in, in some of those older pipes.
Especially if we get into a plant and we have a dirty pipe, that's something to consider. Right. Okay, thank you.
So as, as Alan mentioned, coming up at the next commission meeting, there'll be a, a few items on the regular commission meeting agenda. There'll be this OCCT. There'll also be a change order for PFAS to do some what they call pilot work. So just to kind of rewind the tape here a little bit, the, the comprehensive agreement was executed in February of last year. Around April, May of last year, the EPA released their, their draft rule for the PFAS regulations, and they set that at four parts per trillion. It was around that time that the city sent project company a, a request, an RFP, to do some work to, to evaluate the, the background levels of PFAS in the well field. And as you can see here, the, the average of, of the well field is around 18. So certainly, you know, there, there is PFAS in the well field. It's thankfully not as high as, as certainly other parts of the country have seen, but it's certainly going to require us something, you know, to do about it. So as part of that, now recognizing that, you know, that there, that there is PFAS in, in the water, that we do need to now meet the final regulation, so they, they kept it at four parts per trillion. The, the pilot work itself is, is effectively a, a test to ensure that either our existing infrastructure, you know, the nanofiltration is already a known treatment technology for PFAS. Certain types of ion exchange are also acceptable for PFAS, but right now we're, we focus the ion exchange on removing color. So we want to, we want to be able to test, you know, these technologies. We also want to look at whether or not there may be some operational changes we can do. If there's maybe one or two wells that are contributing, you know, the, the greatest amount of PFAS, perhaps, you know, one consideration would be to, to eliminate those from, you know, the ongoing operation.
So, so if I understand you correctly, while the, while the PFAS is not an issue when we, when we voted on the, on the P3 project, it has since become an issue as a result of the EPA now requiring that there be no more than four parts per trillion. You're asking, or the staff is asking also for a change order to be able to first test options on how we can reduce the current 18 parts per trillion to meet the EPA requirement. But you're telling us today, I hope, that at the end of that study, you will find a technology that will be able to comply with the EPA when, 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 by the time the plant is operational, is that correct?
Well, here, here's, here's my understanding.
Wait, I'm asking him the question.
With the, the, the testing mayor will absolutely determine what, if any, you know, additional technology we might need. We may be, we may be fine with what we have currently. If some additional equipment is required, that equipment would, we would start working on developing that and having that online as shortly after reaching commercial operation of the new plant comes online, which is in, in September of 2026. The rules, the rules are such that, I think it's 2029 is when you have to meet the rule of, of being able to treat the, the levels of, of PFAS. So we'll, we'll certainly not be out of compliance. We'll be working towards...
Right, but I mean, can't we, can't we work on that while we're building the plant to make sure that, that when we first become operational, that we'll have, be protecting the people? I mean, it seems miniscule, four parts per trillion, but it's still...
It is, it's a...
But I don't know what the, what impact these, these chemicals are having on our body. Right now, we're at 18, so we're over four times the recommended amount. So the sooner we can get that, you know, incorporated in our processing. What about, what about our Peel Dixie plant? Are we, Alan, do we know anything about the, the, the condition of the water in Peel Dixie? Are we, are we compliant there?
Yeah, Mayor, right now Peel Dixie is below the four parts per trillion.
It is the, is that because of the source of the water or because of the processing?
It, it's actually both.
Okay.
It, it's a 100% nanofiltration, which is effective at removing it, but also we have lower levels coming out of the well fields down there.
Okay, all right.
We switched over to that about, what, 10 years ago, Alan, if I remember correctly? We, we retrofitted the, the plant down there for basically the technology that we're going to be putting into the new Prospect Lake plant.
I, I think it was a little more than 10 years ago, but yet, yes. And that is 100% nanofiltration, whereas the Prospect is 70% nanofiltration, and the other 30% is ion exchange, a slightly different variation.
That's why the folks down in the south part of town have much better-looking water than folks in District One.
And, and that is why we're doing this, is when we finally come online, we, we want to make sure that we are satisfying the requirements, and the project company can guarantee the water coming out of there. From a design point of view, we'll meet those. And, and of course, we will be doing testing to adjust, but we want to make all those changes now before the plant comes online.
Well, that's the point. I don't want to wait till 2029 for that to happen, that's all I'm saying.
Correct. I think that is our goal, is to, whatever changes, if they are necessary, would be put in place before we...
And, and Mayor, if I may just real quick, the, Alan had talked about these being known unknowns. So we knew we were going to have to go through these two testing processes and had put money aside in the project budget. So when we talk about these change orders, it's not, we don't have to find additional money. We incorporated the, the known unknowns into the project budget.
Okay. Warren?
Okay, a couple of things, just to, just going back to when we did approve the project, just for clarity's sake, one of the things we did when we were deciding what to do, we did go with the nanofiltration because we did know that the EPA was going to be coming up with these regulations, and that's one of the reasons why we did switch to the nanofiltration in, in this plant, to anticipate what's coming. So this is not a surprise. We knew exactly this was coming down the pike, and this was part of the reason, number one, why we chose this plant, and number two, why we went ahead and didn't delay this because we knew it was going to be coming right around the corner, and to go back and not do a P3, we would not have met the deadline. Is that, is that your regulation?
Yes, Commissioner. We, we, we knew the technology, the technology would deal with PFAS, but we did not know what the limits would be at that time, so we couldn't incorporate that requirement in the agreement.
And the other thing, I think it's, it's, for the people at home that are listening that don't quite understand what we're talking about, well, you're talking about the 18 parts, that's the water coming into the plant, not the water that's leaving the plant, that's coming into the plant. The nanofiltration gets rid of those PFASs, so that is not at all the water that's going to be delivered to our end-use customers, is that correct?
That's, that's the goal.
That's 100% correct.
Correct, so, so we have anticipated that we're going to need the nanofiltration to clean that. This is, this is not an unknown, this is not something we did not anticipate.
Right. The, the known unknown, I think Susan put it perfectly.
And, and the other interesting thing, John, you brought up an interesting point. We got calls from Broward General, from River Oaks, from other areas that, I think when Peel Dixie, Peel Dixie was down for a while, and everybody's freaking out, something's wrong with the water. Look how yellowed it is. I mean, the Broward General was calling, there's no, is there a leak somewhere? What happened was, I mean, Peel Dixie, because it has the newer plant, has the nanofiltration, and they're used to water that's not golden brown, which is not a good color for water. When Peel Dixie went down, that whole area got to drinking the water that the rest of us have been drinking for years. So that tells you the difference of the quality and color of, of water that the nanofiltration will be bringing. Is that, is that a true statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, please go ahead. We're on the last slide.
So this is the, the last slide, and, and basically, I wanted to talk to very quickly, at the next commission meeting, we'll be bringing four cams to your attention. The first one is an amendment to the comprehensive agreement, and, and it is to allow us to move one project within the enabling works from a city responsibility that we would build to one that the project company would build. After doing a lot of analysis, we determined the best way to deliver the, the raw water pipe going into the plant would be to have them construct it since it's inside their footprint. So we have to amend the agreement, and then we'll bring a change order, change order number four, to actually assign that work to them. Along with that, there'll be two additional change orders we'll be presenting to you. The first one is for that next phase of the optimal corrosion control study that we're doing, the pipe loop, and then one for the PFAS pilot testing. So as we are looking at the overall cost for the enabling works portion of the project, we initially had budgeted $181 million. As we've been working through it, even incorporating these, we're looking at, total cost will be around $166 million. So we are staying under budget, even though we have these additional requirements.
All right, I thought the enabling component was from the plant to the distribution center at Five Ash, not from the source to the plant, which is, which was sitting right on top of the source. Wasn't that incorporated in the original design and budget?
It, it was not part of the $485 million. It was part of the $181 million enabling works for the pipe going from the...
Source.
From the source, from the well field into the plant. So, so all we're doing is we're assigning responsibility to the project company to build that versus going out through a regular solicitation process.
Okay, I understand.
Can I, can I ask a question, Dean?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so Peel Dixie is 100% nanofiltration, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What percentage is this new treatment plant going to be?
The, the new plant is 70% nanofiltration and 30% ion exchange.
Why is it not also 100%? I'm just, I'm not criticizing, I'm just curious.
So there, there was a study done as we were looking at the future plant. One of the issues that we have to balance is our consumptive use permit, how much water we're allowed to draw out of the Biscayne Aquifer. When you use nanofiltration, you lose approximately 15% of the water to, to waste product. And so this was a way to cut down on the amount of waste and get more production water out of the system.
So we might have, had we not done this, we might have exceeded our limit and would not be able to deliver enough water to the consumer, is that it?
That, that's correct. And, and they were trying to look at all the different technologies and what our needs were, and it recommended going with the 70/30 split.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on this? Okay, the people that signed up, I think, have already spoken. So anyone else from the commission have any other questions? All right, well, keep up the good work, and thank you for coming by, and so what's the ETA?
We, we are on track for September 2026.
2026?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to CF1, this is the City Homeless Initiatives Update. Commissioner Sturman or, or staff, who's going to lead this?
Chris, come on down. Chris and I have had several conversations. We've had to, and, and Chris has done it, actually, he's done a fantastic job of putting this together. I couldn't think of a better person to be in this position here. We've met with several community leaders. We met with Lamar, was it this past Friday, Friday or Thursday?
Is that Commissioner Fisher?
Lamar Fisher.
Yeah.
And we, Chris had gone through some of the things that you're going to be seeing here, and almost everything, he's very much on board. Is that, that's a correct statement, and very supportive of what we're doing, on the county level wants to match, you know, meet us and advance all our projects. And Mr. Vice Mayor, just to, to iterate a concern you had, he still has his knot in backyard, everything that Chris is going to be coming forward, all of our plans, it's assumed that the county's going to spread this out. It's not going to all fall on our shoulders. This is some pilot programs and things we're going to do with the understanding that this is, the 31 cities in Broward County are going to share the burden. Chris, thank you again, and go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturman, Chris Cooper, Acting Assistant City Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'm actually going to start off this presentation by handing it off to our neighbor support manager, Luisa Agathon. She's going to have the, I think, fun part of talking a little bit about our programs and some highlights from the last year, then I'll step back in and talk about our response again to our state law, House Bill 1365, and then open it up for discussion after that. So Luisa?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I, I think before kicking it off, I just want to say that this is really a team effort. So I want to recognize the team from Neighbor Support, our police, homeless outreach officers, and also our mobile integrated healthcare unit from the fire department who helped us look good and have some of the success stories that we have in place. So from a big picture perspective, I wanted to provide you with the pit count, which is the point-in-time count. This is done by Broward County every year or every other year. And, and what we've seen is the latest numbers that we have from then is from 2023, which is 2,487 individuals were identified within three days in January of 2023 to be homeless. This number includes those who are sheltered and unsheltered. And out of that 2,400 number, you have 780 individuals who are homeless within the city of Fort Lauderdale. In last year, or actually this year, rather, the Task Force for Ending Homelessness did their own Voices of the Street or their own survey here in Fort Lauderdale, and we had close to 800 undopedicated responses as it relates to the number of homeless individuals. And then we are scheduled, or the county's scheduled to host the point-in-time count for 2023, 2025, in January 23rd through the 25th. And just to point out that the point in count, or point-in-time count, is a snapshot, it's not really a holistic number of the number of individuals who are homeless on our streets.
Hold that slide, go back for one second. See that number, 797, is that county or city?
City.
City, right.
797, at the bottom, yes.
Okay, so that's much, pretty much in line with what the pit count is. Okay. Thank you.
And that's the pit count from a year and a half ago.
Right, from, from '23, yeah, right.
And then also, Luisa, this is count of those individuals who agree to being identified, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that shades, the, the number only accounts for those who are willing to participate.
Want to participate, correct. So out of that 2,400 number, there are 1624 individuals who are unsheltered. And then the graph here outlines 74% of that population between four municipalities. And we have about 48% of those unsheltered individuals within, from the county in the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Wow, Lauderdale has that many? Wow.
This next slide helps highlight the shelter capacity. Again, we have 2,487 individuals who are both sheltered and unsheltered, 1,600 that are unsheltered, and we have a shelter capacity of about 612 shelter beds available countywide. And this, this was the census as of, or the capacity in total, and we got numbers as of yesterday, and the count is 553 beds, shelter beds available countywide thus far.
It's come down?
Yes, so there's a, the Central Hack currently has a plumbing, a major plumbing project that's underway, and it's going to be done in January, so that's reduced the number of shelter beds available.
Run through that one more time if I can. So 612 is the total shelter bed capacities in the whole county?
Correct.
With the, no, uh, uh, community, faith-based, the whole, everything together, okay?
This is Central Hack, North Hack, and the Salvation Army. The three major emergency shelters that are paid for by Broward County.
Okay, and that's capacity. Okay, census as of January, that, what does that number represent?
Those were the number of beds that were available. So the, the latest number that I can provide you is 553 between those three shelter beds, shelter places that are available, shelter beds that are available within the three shelters.
So none of them are working at capacity?
They're working at reduced capacity.
Why would that be if there's unsheltered people, reluctance to go in?
She said a plumbing issue in ours.
Well, yeah, one of them, but the other ones, I mean, all three of them are under capacity.
Uh, North Hack is, so North Hack is at 262, so they're pretty close.
Okay.
And the Salvation Army is actually at capacity.
And that per bed amount is per day to shelter somebody?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right.
And these are the only shelters that the county funds, or are there other?
Correct. They have other, other type of housing, transitional housing, like the Salvation Army has transitional housing.
Right.
But these are the ones that are available for overnight, immediate overnight for emergency.
Okay, so this doesn't include vouchers for, for permanent supportive housing or, okay.
This is simply emergency shelter beds.
Okay, good.
So bringing it to the city focus now, we had the city commission outline their three priorities as it relates to the housing accessibility. One was to address congregation, the other one to coordinate services, and then improve the feeling of safety of our neighbors. So what we've done is, based on the programs that we have in place, we outline how our programs help meet those three priorities, and then I will go into more details as to some of the programs that we have in place and help highlight some of the success stories. So to kick it off, we have Community Court, as you know, has been established since 2018. We've, during the past year, due to the flooding, we have moved about three different times, and we are now at a location that seems to be very, very beneficial to those who are in need, and then also to bring in service providers to help us. So within this first three quarters of the year, we had about 1778 individuals walk in through our doors who are not necessarily with a notice to appear, they're just walking in for services. We have 50 individuals who had a notice to appear, walked through our doors, and then out of that 50, we had 16 graduates that completed the program. Out of the 1778, including the NTAs, we've referred a number of individuals to housing, so 675, also for case management referrals to 239, mental health treatment, 100... Also for case management referrals, to 239. Mental health treatment, 105, and substance abuse treatment, 104. I think it's good to analyze as well that when you look back into, in comparison to last year, our number of walk-ins for our full year was 1,255. So we've already exceeded the number within the first three quarters of this year in utilizing Community Court as a resource. And then we also had five graduates last year, as in comparison to 16 this year.
Substance includes alcohol too, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So when we're looking at all these referrals, help me understand what exactly that means in, you know, kind of a real world sense. So what happens when we do the referral?
Yeah, we connect indirectly to that individual, to the service provider or the nonprofit that provides that type of service.
Okay, so if we have a housing referral, does that mean 675 people got housing?
No, that means that we connected them to Likely Task Force, who has the number of emergency shelter beds available for the county. And depending on their availability, they made those shelter beds available to them. Or if we're working with them, help them prepare a permanent housing package. So put the paperwork together so that they can go into the list for their permanent housing.
But, so then, do we know how many of those referrals for housing actually wound up with housing?
I cannot say that, no.
All right. And then the same thing, I'm looking at, you know, substance abuse treatment referrals, 104. Do we know how many of those actually completed the substance abuse treatment program and are drug-free?
That's the part of it, I do not know. So the short answer is no.
Okay, so this is the problem I have with all of our programs. We measure a lot of things that are meaningless. So we're not measuring outcomes. This is something I've been talking about for the better part of two decades now. We need to start focusing on outcomes, because what we're measuring is stuff that's easy to measure. And I get that. That's the biggest problem in the performance measurement arena, is we measure what's easy. We can measure inputs, we can measure contacts, but we have no idea whether any of this is actually leading to improvements in people's lives. I need us to be thinking about how we measure whether or not we're moving the needle. We need performance-based outcome measurements. If we're not looking at whether these, you know, 1,778 walk-ins and 50 NTAs actually improve the quality of their lives, then we're not demonstrating that we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and whether or not we're actually accomplishing anything for all the effort we put in. So I need us to rethink what we're measuring so that we actually measure something that's important.
Well, I think to your point, if you look to the right, 16 graduates out of the 1,778 and the 50. If that is their success rate, I would suggest that you're right. We are not performing based on our, the expectations that people have of us. Same with the, down at the bottom, where it shows the number of reunifications, 12.
Right. And I'm not even sure I understand what graduate is. So again, going back to just picking randomly the housing referral or the case management referral, are these graduates somehow related to all these referrals? So again, I'm not seeing the connection.
The graduates, and I can clarify that, it depends on the judge and what she determines the sentence, for the lack of better words to be. So she determines that they need to do 10 hours of Community Court, and they complete their 10 hours of Community Court, then that's a graduate. If they complete their substance abuse treatment program, then that's a graduate. So it changes on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. So, yeah, so we may have somebody who goes to Community Court and gets their referral and then never does anything with the referral, but they're a graduate. So again, we're not measuring outcome. I'm not seeing anything that tells me how we are actually improving the lives of all these people that are coming through our facilities. We're processing a lot of folks, and, you know, maybe that's good, maybe that's not good. I don't know. And that's the problem. I simply don't know.
But John, that might be harder to measure than you think, and let me...
Oh, no, I know it's hard. That's the problem. That's why we don't measure it, because it's hard.
No, no, I tell you what, I'll give you an example. Let's say mental health, or drug abuse, or substance abuse. You'll have somebody that enters a program, and it's not a defined number. And then like alcohol abuse, and all of a sudden you've helped them and they've graduated, and it's a success story. And they could go a month, two months, three years. They could go several years. Then they start to drink again, and it's, you know, they cycle back in. I remember when I first started medicine, my first month, there was somebody who had an alcohol problem as a resident, and I spent every day, and it was fantastic. I cured him. He's a success story. Like, three months later, I rotate back in and he's back again. So how you measure, have you, if you've given them two, three, four years of sobriety, or they're on medications, taken them off for a while, I mean, does that, I mean, if they come back, is that a success? Is that a failure? Is the success keeping them sober, keeping them on their medications? And the other thing is, as you get, you've cured somebody, somebody else will come in and take, there'll be another person that shows up to take the place of that number that just went down. It just goes back up again. So it's not as easy to quantify and quantify as you might think.
No, no, in fact, just the opposite, Dr. Sherman. I've worked in the performance measurement arena for 25 years. I know how difficult this is. I used to do this for the city of Jacksonville. I'm well aware of this. When I was the Finance Director for the Children's Commission, we were constantly being asked by the city council up there to do longitudinal studies, where we would track kids from pre-K through graduation, and look at, you know, how many of these kids wound up in jail, how many early pregnancies we had, what our graduation rates were like, so that we could determine the efficacy of the hundreds of millions of dollars that we were spending on these programs, and whether we were actually having an impact on the quality of people's lives. And I'm saying, yes, I agree with you completely, this is difficult to measure. But again, let's just, again, pick something at random, substance abuse treatment referral. What we can measure is how many people completed a substance abuse treatment program. So I referred you over there, but did you actually show up? Did you go through the entire program? We could also do follow-ups, three, six, nine, 12 months down the road. You know, we track this with people who are incarcerated, and we can tell you what recidivism rates are. So these are not impossible, but they're not simple. I agree with you with that. But I think if we're going to continue to spend millions and millions of dollars, we need to know whether we are in fact accomplishing anything for the money that we're spending. Because if we're not, maybe we need to do something else with that money. You know, maybe this is not an effective use of the resources, of staffing, of the building that we're renting, the dollars we're putting into this program. If we're not changing anything, and we keep doing the same thing, then I think we need to reassess our approach.
Well, Warren, you're our homeless representative. What's your analysis of those comments?
Well, here's my thinking. You have to decide, what does it mean by success? What does it mean by success? Oh, by the way, David, can I have you up here just for a second? What does it mean by success? If you take somebody that's off the street and you've helped them for a year or two, and now they're backing, and, oh, we failed, we failed. Well, no, take a look. Okay, oh, we failed. What, you know, what is the success, and what's the difference? Which one do you plug in? That's all I need to know. Okay. What is a success, what's a failure? And if you could take somebody off the street for a year, two years, three years, even if they come back, I mean, it's not an all or nothing. What is our endpoint? I don't have an answer to that. This is something we have to think about. And if, okay, they're just going to go back again and go back to alcohol and drugs, why bother? No. If our goal is to help people, and even if you've helped them for a few years, that's still a success. And we have to decide what our endpoint is there. That's the take home of this.
I think that's absolutely right, Commissioner Sherman. I think we have to define what success is. And to your point, you know, maybe that's, you know, maybe if somebody is substance-free for a year, maybe that's success. I don't know what that number is, but I do think we have to, you know, talk to experts in the field and say, you know, if we can keep somebody sober for a year, the likelihood that they stay sober for an extended period of time is X, right? If they're sober for three months, you know, maybe it's a fraction of X. And again, I don't know what these numbers are. Certainly not my area of expertise. I don't purport to know. But I do think we have to come up with some, you know, some research-based measures of what would be success that we could all kind of agree on. And then measure and see, are we achieving any of these levels of success? I mean, I think our total number of spending right now on our homeless programs in totality is 13 million, if I remember when we were going through our budget. Obviously, not all of that's going to Community Court. I don't know what our Community Court budget is per se. But when we look at, when we look at the money that we're spending, the money that the county is spending, I think we need to know if, again, you know, simplistically saying, is it making a difference? And defining what that difference is, is something I think we all need to think about and agree on.
I want to add something here if I can. I was going to say at the beginning, but now is just a perfect time as ever. And John, you could bear this out. The resources are not unlimited. Is that a good statement here?
In all things, yes.
Correct. And so our goal here, when you look at this, first of all, it's not, you know, you're going to be going through, Chris is going to go through some of the things that we're looking at. And one of the things you're going to take home is it's not one size fits all. Whether it's, you know, there's long-term needs, extra shelter beds, short-term needs, the Susan's proposal as an alternative to arresting people, and then the intermediate. What is our, how could we meet this capacity while we're ramping up long-term shelter beds? But it's not one size fits all. And I keep coming back to the same, it's great to have, you know, pallet homes and things, but how many people are you going to help with that? And the biggest question we have to ask ourselves, the five of us up here, is how could we help the most amount of people with the limited resources we have? And how do we stretch that and leverage that to, again, you're not going to help everybody and do, get everybody a luxury home and what they really need. But how do you get the most bang for your buck with the limited resources we have? And that's what I want you to be thinking about in the back of your mind as we hear this presentation. Okay, thank you.
So what I would say, just to maybe put a pin in that conversation, is Luisa and I do have a lot of conversations about our performance measures since I've been part of the team and working with her. We've really dug into those and what we can provide. You know, we have a lot of good information through our HMIS program, which is the system that anybody availing themselves of a social service through our continuum of care gets put into so we can track frequency of use, types of services acquired, things of that nature. So we are looking into how we can provide or pull some information out of those systems as well. We do have information through our HUD grant programs, through HCD, that provides some performance-based metrics on those agencies that we do fund. It's also important to remember, a lot of what we do is referral to outside agencies that are funded through the continuum of care, through HMIS and other sorts of databases. So again, I don't disagree with you, and I think we could do better, and we'll look for ways to pull that information to give more full picture of whether their success is or areas for improvement in the future. So, point well taken.
Chris and Luisa, just to piggyback on that. So all of those agencies that you just mentioned, all of those programs that are out there, we're not doing this in a vacuum in Broward County. We're not doing this in a vacuum in Fort Lauderdale.
Correct.
So all of these program highlight topics that I see before me, what is that overlap? What are these other agencies doing in terms of benchmarks, in terms of performance measures? I mean, do we coordinate that information? How does that work?
So again, a lot of that information is coordinated through the county-wide continuum of care, which we do have a board member on with Commissioner Beasley Pittman. She's been part of that process for a while now. We also have our HMIS database, which again is the repository for information related for anybody accessing those services through those programs, so that we can pull that information and track and dig into that to see if there's any value in that information for the city.
I just wanted to make sure that we can dig a little bit deeper without actually having to do that work ourselves or using staff time to do that if that information is available. Out of roughly $13 million a year that we're spending, how much of that is actually grant money that is not matched and that's just coming to us for these programs?
So we spend a little over $2 million for our neighbor support-type programs, the homeless outreach team, the neighbor support function in general that's attached to homeless services, and Community Court. The balance of that is through our entitlement grant programs through HCD, like our Home, Hopla, CDBG programs.
So actually then, what percentage would you say of that 13 million we spend is actually grant money that comes to us and is not actually taken out of our general fund?
My math isn't great, but maybe 80%.
So 80%. I just wanted to make sure the public understands that so they don't think that we're actually spending that $13 million ourselves as taxpayer dollars.
Well, they come from the federal government and the state government, so they're funded through, you know, taxpayers in general. But yes, they are from those bigger pockets of money from the federal government, and they are tracked. We do report through the IDIS system, which I know there's a lot of acronyms for these reporting programs. So we do report through that to HUD to make sure that we're meeting those performance metrics and goals of those programs that are funded to us.
And in terms of the dollars that do get funded to us through grant programs, how does that compare to the dollars that flow into the county from agencies and other levels of government?
So the continuum funds a lot of our providers, so things like the Central and North Hack, the Salvation Army. There's several other organizations that are focused on health and human services in the county funded through that program. Some of those are flowing into Fort Lauderdale for service providers, but others are going to other areas of the county. And I don't know what the breakdown is between here or outside the city.
Would you say that the county, though, gets the lion's share of dollars?
So the money comes into the continuum, and that's various sources. It could be federal funds, state funds. They also apply for grants to bring in, to fund those services that the continuum focuses on. I don't have the breakdown of it now, but that is where that money flows to and then is dispersed through the county to cities and agencies and service providers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So just, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think of 13 million, 2 million comes out of us, and the other 11 is grant, Doug Ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah.
Listen, but Luisa, I mean, you're doing, thank you very much. This is very useful information. Thank you.
All right. We wanted to highlight also how our park rangers are helping us in checking our different parks. We have over 100 parks, and within the first three quarters, they've done over 1,100 park checks. And then our homeless...
What's a park check?
So they, the park ranger goes out to the park side, walks around, makes sure that everything, it's, looks good, that people, if they need to be addressed, that they are addressed.
So these aren't encounters with homeless people? These are just making their rounds?
Correct.
Okay.
But they will report if anything is not going right, I guess.
We don't know from this number what that number is. Okay.
There's what, like, four park rangers, I think, or six?
They're more than that.
Four full-time, well, okay.
This is the stats for our police homeless outreach team. So the number of people they've engaged is over 4,200. They've written over 91 NTAs, and their number of unifications was 12 for the first three quarters. So now I would like to highlight the programs that we have in partnership with other organizations. The Housing Navigation Program was established 2022 in partnership with Task Force for Ending Homelessness. We have two teams that go out to the streets and provide outreach, do intake assessments, connect with homeless individuals, and really work on building that trust and provide resources when we can. So we have 138 individuals that we were working on through our list. 10 of those denied services, and so far, we have housed and reunified 27 individuals.
So Luisa, you compare this number, the 138, with the number of, the number of referrals, housing referrals, which is 675. So what's happening with the people between the 675 and the 138? Where do they go?
I think what I could say is that the individuals that you're working on is on a case-by-case numbers, and it's really up to the individual if they want to take the services or not.
No, but I'm saying housing navigation. The point is, I guess, we have a huge deficit between those that are, those individuals on our housing list or have been unified and the number of referrals, housing referrals, that have been made through Community Court. So we can send, to Commissioner Herb's point, we can, you know, sign people up, they qualify for housing, there's 675 of them. Okay, we send them on their way. I'm not sure where we're sending them to, but we seem to capture 138 or 27, who, and the difference, they're on the streets, they're in the beaches, they're in the alleys. So they have a voucher in their pocket, but they have no place to go because we have no place to house them. Is that kind of what we're thinking here?
No, so 675 doesn't mean that you automatically get a housing voucher.
They get a voucher?
No, they do not.
Oh, they do not get a voucher?
It's a referral. So depending on their situation, they may apply for a permanent supportive housing if they're able to. They may get their benefits, social security, and be able to get on route with a, you know, a work, and be able to work themselves so that they can rent a unit. So it depends on the case. So it's not necessarily a housing referral means that an individual would get a housing voucher.
So, okay, so there are even, so how many more people? Let me rephrase that. So if the 675 people are not getting housing vouchers, what does that, what does housing referral really mean to us then?
Yeah, we're connecting them. So we are the connection. So we can connect them to Task Force for Ending Homelessness to see if an emergency shelter bed is available. They can work one-on-one with them to see if they can build a housing package so that they can apply for permanent housing. They can see if, so depending on the case, they may be able to guide them as to what their option or housing option is.
But if we know that the capacity is far less than the need, because what you're showing to us here is that in all of Broward County, the capacity for shelters alone is only 612, and that's optimum.
There's a deficit, correct.
That's optimum, and that, it's even far less than that. I mean, now, I mean, all these numbers are just pointing to the fact as to why we empirically see all these homeless people on the streets and in the beaches and in alleys who are sleeping in cars. I mean, because we do not have the capacity to handle the homeless population. And what you've come down here with are numbers that verify the reality. And so, you know, I think at the end of the day, at the end of your presentation, we're looking for recommendations as to solutions. And I assume you're working with Commissioner Sterman in trying to come up with those solutions because, you know, we've seen this report before, and I don't know if we've really made any progress, but it really concerns me that we have numbers, but we don't have solutions. So let me not interfere with your presentation. Please continue with it, and then hopefully we can have a more robust conversation amongst the commission as to what those solutions might be.
Okay, sounds good. And Chris will go over some of those plan of action and proposals with you. So two last programs, coffee and conversation. This was a peer-to-peer connection at three local libraries with Fellowship Recovery Center and Broward County libraries. So we had over 200 individuals attend the coffee and conversations. Again, referral to a recovery center in substance abuse treatment. And then the last one was our emergency shelter beds. This is a program that we started, really kicked off in July. We have referred 20 individuals for placement at the emergency shelter bed that we purchased as the city. Once they got there, 11 of them denied, and then seven are currently on a housing plan. So I'll turn it over to Chris.
When you say denied, that means the individuals refused the service?
We transported them, and once they were there, they refused services.
And so what happens?
They're released back on the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, before I start with mine, I think it's important to remember a lot of these situations are voluntary. It's difficult to, and it's really almost impossible to force somebody into a situation where they have to avail themselves of these services. They're also able to separate from a service if they decide at some point they're not interested in continuing. So it's a very intense situation when trying to assist somebody, avail themselves of services, and to keep them in the service that we're hoping that they progress through. So I'm going to talk again about our House Bill 1365 response. It's something that we've talked about the last couple of conference meetings, and we do have an ordinance on tonight's agenda, so I do want to touch on that. So the very simple kind of flow of how this would work for us as a city is first, a complaint would come in. Again, the state law talks about a written format that must come into the governing body. We have developed a service request type through our Fix-IT FTL portal that we believe will satisfy that requirement. Furthermore, we think it's important to codify and memorialize that process through Fix-It. So we're working with the city attorney's office to bring back an ordinance that will coincide with our camping prohibition ordinance that will outline that reporting structure and policy and formalize that in our city code. And we'll do that before January 1st, when that requirement becomes effective in the state law.
So when you say dispatch PD HOT to location within five days, if we receive a complaint on a Monday, and police respond on a Friday, and they don't see the person there anymore, what have we accomplished?
So I'll get to that, but I think sneak peek, I think, you know, what we're focused on is meeting the letter of the law, but also make, having an effective program that actually serves a purpose. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So the record, you know, performance was mentioned earlier. It is very important. It's very important to us. Part of the benefit to recording these complaints and these responses in our Fix-It FTL platform is that we can track performance. It does create a record for us that we can use the data to allocate personnel and resources based on these complaints and the trends that we see. It also will show compliance to House Bill 1365. So again, it's important that if we face a challenge or a legal issue, that we have a good record to show that we're compliant. So the dispatch, again, the state law talks about dispatching within five days. PD, the homeless outreach team always does this now, but they will continue to document with photo responses, and they'll actually upload that to our service request response. So again, there's transparency, there's a record, there's proof of performance. The response to the service request, our system provides a written response to the person that submitted it. It's also publicly viewable. Again, it's about being transparent, showing compliance, and making sure that we are in line with the state law. This is what the request will look like, and if you have any feedback, we'd love to hear it. But basically, this is a screenshot of what the app and also our website would show to somebody wanting to put their request in. There's a service request type that mimics the letter, the language in the law as well as in our ordinance titled unauthorized public camping or public sleeping. We need a location. We also would like a general description of the situation. A photograph is optional, but it is helpful if we do know so that we're making sure that we're addressing the actual service request that came in. We want to know if it's occurring overnight, again, so we know if we're dealing with a state law issue or ordinance issue. We want to be able to differentiate between the two and track that information. And if it's a large area, this could be in a park, the beach, or just a general area. Again, being public property, we'd like them to provide a description of the location. So for instance, Holiday Park, we want to know if it's by the pickleball courts or if it's over by the parker, so that our outreach team is able to efficiently address the issue and go right to the request to location. This is a illustration--
Chris, I'm sorry, before you move on--
Oh, sure, yes, ma'am.
With this, this is really available for those who have a cell device. What is the opportunity for those who do not have cell device or that type of technology on their cellphone?
Right. So it's on the cellphone. We also have a website where somebody can go online to the city of Fort Lauderdale website and do the same exact thing as if they were on their phone. And again, the point of having it in this format is because of the written complaint requirement. And what this will also do, and I should have mentioned this earlier, is that we have it set up to route directly, so it's not going to come to you individually, where your staff or you are going to have to figure out what to do with it. It's going to go straight to our homeless outreach team and our neighbor support staff to address.
And Chris, maybe I can add that if any of your offices or staff do receive phone calls, we're going to be doing a little training for your staff and talking to them about how to reroute them into the app. That way we can, the app or the website, that way we get everything in one place.
Will there be acceptance for a written letter, even though, you know, we're talking about the mail process or someone coming through to City Hall and say, "I have a written complaint. I have answered 125." Does that meet the written complaint?
So that's really the point of the idea that we want to codify that written complaint process with the city attorney's office. So if the feedback is to offer an alternative to an online resource, you know, it's something we want to hear now so that we can incorporate them to a complaint.
Yeah, and ultimately, we would then have someone on our staff, maybe two administrative folks that we're bringing on to assist, that would put it into the app. Again, the goal is to get everything in one place.
Right. Yeah, I think tracking and measuring performance and keeping this information's very, very important because, again, if we are subject to a lawsuit under the state statute, we want to make sure that we have that keyed up and ready to go in a very transparent way. So our street coverage that we have, this is consistent with what we do now, but it also would include our response to 1365. In the illustration, you have our police department homeless outreach team in blue, you have our park rangers in green, and you have our code enforcement nighttime staff in that reddish hue. This is a 24-hour period, so you can see from the perspective of coverage and the ability to respond and even do some proactive inspections, we are covered throughout the day and night for most of the week with few exceptions. If there are issues and instances where our outreach team through the police department are not available and they're needed, the park rangers and code enforcement can also engage with patrol staff. We're working closely with PD to make sure that there's procedures in place so that there is coverage and ability to respond at various times and support both the park rangers and code enforcement that are assisting the outreach team. One thing we also want to highlight is our private property trespass program. So this is something that's ongoing, but because what we're currently proposing in the ordinance tonight covers public property, if there are folks in the community that also want to protect private property from trespass of any sort, we do have a process by which they can contact the police department and enact a trespass affidavit. Those are valid for two years. There's a number on the screen if anybody wants to call the police department to verify or find out if they have an active affidavit on file. And that could help folks, you know, have better control of their private property as well. So we wanted to make sure that that was out so people were aware of that. So I think what you've been waiting for is our plan of action. Save the best for last. So steps taken. As you know, we've increased our staff positions in neighbor support and our homeless outreach team in the police department. We increased those by two positions in each area, so four total. We have the non-camping, the camping prohibition ordinance on tonight's agenda. We've had over the last few months 20 emergency shelter beds that we've secured for folks that are referred from Fort Lauderdale, and that is a facility in Hollywood. We talked about the reporting process established through Fix-It FTL, which we intend to codify our reporting process before January 1st. And we've had ongoing meetings with our local service providers, everybody from Broward Partnership, Salvation Army, really anybody that is in the field of serving the unsheltered population. We've also worked with County Legal and their management, and been in discussions with their municipalities about their plans of action as well. So October 1st to December 31st, we made a proposal to the Northwest Progressive CRA for funding to purchase the building that we currently hold community court in. So that would come to you for your consideration for the purchase of that building sometime in the near future. We did base that request on the priorities and goals of the CRA to make sure that the purchase aligned with their plan of action for the Northwest Progressive CRA. We also received a grant from the state to secure an additional 10 mental health and 10 substance abuse treatment beds, so 20 beds total. We have agreements with service providers for those beds. We're just waiting to get the final agreements for the grant squared away so that we can formally enter in those agreements with those providers.
So we're not establishing those beds in any particular location? That we just, we would just be able to secure the funding to be able to place them in existing providers?
Correct. So we'll have 20 beds reserved, 10 for mental health and 10 for substance abuse. So those are additional beds for the use of the city and folks that are in the city that want to avail themselves of those services. We are continuing to look for temporary overnight respite shelter. We've been looking and analyzing different potential sites, both city-owned and also through existing providers, if they have any open space on their sites that we can set something up. We would bring that back to you if the commission agrees that that's a path they want to take. We've worked with our disaster response contractor to give us some proposals so we can also provide you with an idea of what the cost of that may be so that you have a full picture of that proposal to consider. We intend to have at least three educational town halls for House Bill 1365. We think that's very important for the community to understand what the law states, what our ordinance states, what the process to report is, and what the expectations are, both in terms of how the city will respond and what kind of issues we'll be able to assist with. And again, we've elicited support from our park rangers and our code inspectors to help us report encampments and also to help identify areas of concern that we need to focus our outreach efforts on. January 1st, 2025, and ongoing, that's when House Bill 1365 will be fully in effect, where the city is open to litigation for not being compliant with that and responsive to that. We will be providing updates, regular updates, on any reports that we receive. And again, we'll be tracking that data, so we want to make sure that folks are aware of what that progress looks like in terms of enforcing our new ordinance and our outreach programs. So we want to continue to share that with you and the public. We want to get your feedback on the feasibility, on us continuing to put work in exploring things like pallet homes, storage of belongings, the use of different small shelter-type things like pallet homes for respite shelters and things like that, medical respite beds and the safe parking program. We've put a lot of work into analyzing those, looking at costs, looking at properties, analyzing the feasibility, and we just want to make sure that we're continuing to be on the right direction. So whatever feedback you have today, we, you know, follow into the future and also continue to bring you information and updates on those programs and the potential for implementing something like that. Again, even after January 1st, we need to continue working with our neighbors to inform them of our programs and what we've been doing with them and manage the expectations. And of course, we want to continue to work with our partners for long-term solutions and refine approaches. I know there's a lot of different ways we can address these issues. It's not a one-size-fits-all. There's plenty of things out there that have been tried and true that we can tap into and hopefully implement on our own with our partner and with our partners. People like BPHI, the Broward Partnership, the Salvation Army, are faith-based community. I think that's really a resource that we need to tap into. I think there's a lot of willingness in that community to help us and address the situation as part of their faith and their mission. I don't know about you. I've had a lot of private citizenries out to me with ideas and resources and offers of things that they can maybe do to help, so I want to continue to tap into those and see if there's any opportunities to engage folks that want to help and are willing to help. Obviously, our continuum of care, it's important to continue to engage with them, both in terms of the funding opportunities and also the resources that they have in the community. And also Broward County, there's some opportunities, I think, there to work with Broward County on some initiatives that they brought forth and some studies that they have that we may be able to capitalize on and also participate in.
So, Ches.
So I don't want to speak for the county, but I know they've done some analysis on the continuum and how those programs are funded and what they do through the continuum of care. They've done some analysis on pallet shelter sites that had some really good information on it that we can probably use in our deliberation of that as a potential solution. They have done some things that we've taken advantage of with affordable housing to continue to grow our inventory of affordable housing. So a lot of those things we need to work through and with the county to bring to fruition.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
In regards to the action plan, the, under October 1st through December 31st, the purchase of the community court location, using the CRE funds for that, I do have some concerns regarding that. If you, I don't know, in the presentation, if you shared how much money is being designated or suggested to purchase this--
Yeah, how much would that cost? Do we know?
So the request was approximately $3 million.
And the building is for sale, so if it is sold to someone else, we would lose the ability to use the location. And the city, the general fund, would pay the CRA rent that we're currently, you know, or whatever the market rent is.
Yeah, so for that building, we currently pay a rent for the use of one day. We do use that building to store some materials, so we're speaking with the owner at the same time as considering the purchase and also talking to him about the use of that building more days a week, you know, what that would look like if the purchase doesn't happen, what the rent potentially could look like. So we're looking at both paths to make sure that we have some sort of outcome that works for us regardless of what the decisions are. But we currently use it one day a week. We've had some conversations about if we need more community court dates with our ordinance, that we may need to use that facility for one or two more days a week.
Vice Mayor, has this conversation ever come up in any meetings with the Flagler Village Civic Association as to the feasibility of purchasing that for their neighborhood?
It has come up in conversations with South Mill River Civic Association because of their desire to see if we do purchase a location such as this, they would like to see the services that are provided by Hope South Florida to be moved out, to be moved out of their residential neighborhood. So may I ask you, how many square feet are in that current location? Because, and what are we actually using for the community court?
So I'm told there's about 6,000 square feet, and we use about half of that. There's a convenience store that occupies a portion of the building already, and we're only allowed to use a portion of what's vacant, so about 3,000 square feet.
So it's probably not then easily adaptable for something other than just the community court?
So I think the site, the total site area is about 7,000, a little over 7,000 square feet.
And Mayor, even though it probably does fall within the Flagler Village Civic Association boundaries, it's not really in any close proximity to a lot of the residential units in that neighborhood. So I, again, I-- So I, um, again, I, I, I would just be much more in favor of a, of a $3 million purchase if we could somehow combine community court with these other services that are being provided. Because again, um, I'm very much interested in seeing us explore ways, uh, to remove these services from a residential neighborhood.
My concern with this, um, my question when I had the pre-agenda meeting, the, um, life of the building, how long is the structure going to be there? And then the other part of that, this is affecting, um, the entire CRA that falls under that umbrella, not just Flagler Village. And we're already in conversations of how we can continue to move forward and bring the economic, um, progress that we need in specifically the Six Trunk area. And if we're going to purchase something at this magnitude, it needs to be something that's going to be, um, long-term, that's going to be liable, that's going to continue to allow us to benefit from it additionally. Because if it's a backstory, we're going to pay $3 million and in four years, the building is gone. And I don't know what the numbers are for the rent that's going to be paid to the CRA. Do we have those numbers?
No, no, we're still in the just exploratory stages right now. Oh, go ahead.
We do? Okay.
While you're pulling that up, so if the city were to pay rent to the CRA, we, we still haven't decided yet on what the sunset date for the CRA is going to be. It would only be until 2025 barring any change to the sunset date. So we're basically going to take that $3 million, buy this building, and then next year revert back to the city.
The asset would revert back to the city in that case, but again, it come January, we don't know what the outcome's going to be as far as that continuing of the CRA.
Right. Okay.
So, so just to, um, help the out a little bit here, this building is basically a big open space. And when I visited the community court a few weeks ago, um, it's just a big open space with, with some, um, with rooms, with some room separation. There is a convenience store which we, if we buy the building, I don't know what our lease obligations are to that business, but we can certainly consider what we want to do with that convenience store, which many people complain about because it's a magnet for people that are not helping out the area. So, um, there are lots of different discussions as to how we would program it, how much money would cost to refit it for the purposes which you describe and, and, you know, which would the city would end up wanting to see it happen. Unfortunately, a number of years ago, the CRA paid $25,000 to a, an artist who painted a mural on the outside, which we, for some reason, repainted over. So I don't know what the point of all that was, but, uh, um, we definitely need, you know, $3 million for, uh, property at that location for 7,000 square feet, um, I think is a fair, fair price. We, even if without the building, the land alone would cost that. So something to think about, um, and at some point we'll get a staff recommendation as to how we should proceed forward. Yes, Anthony?
Yes, Anthony Verhado, Assistant City Manager. So we did the presentation to the CRA board on the low-end base rent would be, um, about 1.1 million dollars over a five-year period, and the high end would be 1.5 million dollars over a five-year period. So that, that's the revenue that it would generate back to the entity that is in control of it, whether it's the CRA. If it gets extended, there would be a revenue generated from that, or it would go as an asset to the city if the CRA sunset it.
Well, and, and let's, let's also kind of wrap that into, because, you know, we set up the, and I forget the term we're using for it now, but basically the Economic Development Corporation, um, to be the successor in interest, if you will, using a legal term, uh, for, you know, the, the remaining funds from the CRA. So is this something that would then turn over to the Economic Development Corporation? Or would it come back to the city?
It wasn't currently anticipated to do that, but it could. So we could definitely have that conversation and see how the commission feels comfortable with moving in that direction.
So, so just a couple of things and, and not my district, but I'm just going to speak to some of the financial issues. So, you know, we, we did do something along the same lines of this when we acquired the Green Market over on Sistrunk, because that was a noxious use to that neighborhood. And the only way to get rid of it was basically to acquire it. So if we're looking at this parcel as something that is really, you know, destructive to that neighborhood, which it has been for quite a long period of time, and, you know, maybe in that respect, this makes sense from that purpose. I, I certainly don't know that spending $3 million for one day a week of community court makes any sense whatsoever. I mean, I, I think, I, I think community court's a great program. I know they're struggling over there because the AC doesn't work and they're having all kinds of problems. So I think we have a lot of renovation work that we're probably going to have to do to do that. You know, to the mayor's point, $3 million for a parcel in that neighborhood is probably a pretty good deal to buy the land if we wanted to buy land in that location. I'm wondering, is there a cheaper place to do community court, though? It, it seems like, you know, i- it seems like we want to acquire the parcel and we'll put community court and some other stuff in there, we'll store some things in there, as opposed to what's the best location for community court? And then let's find the best way to provide them a, a, a location that meets their needs, that, you know, has the appropriate level of amenities and is in, you know, substantial functioning order and so forth. Uh, I don't know how much space they need for community court. I don't know if they, I, I'm, to, to the mayor's point, I was actually supposed to go and do a site visit over there as well. I just haven't been able to schedule that. So I, I think there are some questions about how best we provide community court and is that the right location, um, for, for that, for that function, for that activity? Because we could probably do it cheaper elsewhere.
But, but try to find a location somewhere else in the city that would not be controversial. At this point, it's been going on there for these number of years.
Right.
And, uh, actually it was going on in, in the city hall until.
Yes.
So I shouldn't say years, I'll say months. But the point is that, um, we really, we really should find a permanent location for the community court, but it's not just for the community court. It's, it can be outfitted for other purposes that will assist us in providing the services that we want for the homeless population, um, you know, and also perhaps to get rid of the noxious use at the end. There are all kinds of benefits, I think, in moving forward on trying to acquire this property. And, um, and still the CRA would not lose because it would provide cash flow over the course of the years. We're looking at, what'd you say, 1.5 million over five years? I mean.
But that's only if we have a five-year CRA.
Oh, no, 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 no. As you pointed out, the, the rent could go into the successor organization. So it's still going to benefit the CRA in many ways and be a, a permanent investment in, in providing funding for that, that new entity, uh, to be able to provide affordable housing matches or to be able to provide, uh, economic development infusion of money for new businesses. So, I mean, I think it's a win-win all around, but, you know, whether or not we move, you know, Hope South Florida there or not, I, you know, those are whole other discussions. But I think that finding a permanent home, I don't think city hall was ever intended to be the permanent home of, uh, of the, uh, of the community court. It was just convenient. Keep in mind, why is it convenient? We're finding the concentration of, of homeless people to be in this location is near the, is near the county courthouse. There are all kinds of different considerations that were considered, um, in, in choosing that location, and it kind of works. So anyway, we don't have to make a decision today, but certainly it's something to think about. And, uh, I think we should, you know, really look at the pros and cons going forward, but we need to make a decision hopefully by our next meeting.
So, so Mayor, we can bring back to you kind of a full analysis, um, both on the financial end and pros and cons of the location and what potential uses are. And certainly, you know, $3 million for a piece of property there, if it's even used just for, you know, a five-year period, still serves that purpose. So yeah, we'll, we'll bring back that analysis.
And we anticipate on doing that because we also, the community court benefit is, is just that, it's like a side benefit of what, what we're requesting. Because you look at the Northwest CRA's goals, reducing slum and blight is a big one, reducing the number of convenience stores is another one, there's that convenience store there. So we feel it aligns very well with that, but the, the ancillary benefit is that we have a location for community court. And I would just remind the commission that Luis's group, this is the third location they've been in since the flood. They have moved around, they have looked for other locations. It is very difficult, to your point, Mayor, um, when you look at those services and the space that's needed to provide for those things, it's very difficult to do. And then in the areas that we're talking in other parts of the city, it creates a, for lack of a better term, a convenience issue, right? Because a lot of the people you're dealing with do not have access to transportation. So you kind of, we're being told by experts in the field, you got to bring it to where they are. And right now, they're in the downtown.
And, and Anthony, that's, that's a really good point, because I, and, and you probably remember very well, when we were having our challenges with Food Not Bombs and Mr. Rabbit, we attempted to set up a city-sponsored feeding location. That was the alternative. We had to provide another location for them to conduct feeding programs, and we set up a task force, and they looked and scoured all over the trace. And we set some almost insurmountable criteria of what it couldn't be next to. And I think we were left with virtually nothing, which is why we never got a feeding program set up. So, you know, i- i- is that something that, uh, that maybe we could get some of the folks off the street that are being fed right now and get them indoors? Again, I don't know.
You know what it does is it brings the population within our control.
Right.
That we can now work with them to try to, to, you know, work to case manage their needs and to try to really, uh, make our programs effective rather than have them scattered all over the city. We get so many complaints from, especially in your, in your district, from, um, good-hearted people who want to try hard to, to help homeless people, but in the end, sacrifice the, the neighborhood in which it's located because of things they cannot control, so.
No, I'm just thinking of those folks that are currently still being fed in, in front of Stranahan Park, that we've tried to get them off the street and get them indoors and feed them there. Is that something that this location could potentially accommodate? Just a question.
I think it's up for discussion and it's definitely an option we could consider.
Right. I mean, I, I think if we can do some, some things that, uh, you know, that improve the quality, the experience that our tourists and our businesses and our residents have in that area around the library and get people off the street and maybe into a, as, as the mayor says, a secure, safe, you know, air-conditioned, out of the weather environment, if we already have that space anyway, because that, that has been a significant challenge. I know I talked to a lot of the business owners in that, in that area, and they're constantly asking us to do something. And I know we've struggled with that, Mayor, you know, for the better part of the last 10-plus years, we've lost multiple lawsuits on that one. So not sure if the, if the space would accommodate that, but just again, you know, as we're thinking it out.
Staff, let them, let them figure it out, tell us the pros and the cons, and if it will work, not work. Maybe also consult the, the, the neighborhood association. I would like to get their buy-in on that. Okay. Very good. I have two people sign up to speak, Ted and Sarah and Charlie King, of course.
Well, they're, while they're coming up, Susan, can you just tell me, have you had any discussions with the county or even the city attorney, uh, about that plaza by the library that was just brought up? What is going on with that plaza for the last six years where?
Very good one.
We eliminated the, the encampment, but it's just a mess for six years?
I have not, but we can certainly add that on to the list to ask when we get together with the county folks.
I would love to get an update on that because it's really abysmal, uh, that site, and it's just been forever. I, I don't know what the plan is, I don't know what they're deciding, um, but I think that we need to just find out. It's just ridiculous.
Yeah, I think we had provided an, like, six, seven months ago, but I'll get a new one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Hello, everybody. Hi, Commissioner. My name is Ted Insara. I'm the president of the River Oaks Civic Association. Boy, let me tell you, meet, see the new plan, same as the old plan. It's the same thing, it's a rerun every year, and I really don't see anything getting done. I said that same thing at city hall, years after years, because, I mean, the homeless task force just comes and you giving them plaques and proclamations and, and there's just, it's getting worse and worse out there on the streets. I mean, I'm ground level. There's a, uh, you know, th- there's a saying that hurt me a few times in my life that, you know, watch out what you ask for because you just might get it. Well, you know what? You guys insisted, you're obsessed with the fact that Fort Lauderdale becomes a big city. And you know what? We are a big city now, and now we have big city problems and there's no plan. It's like you, you didn't think this thing out. I mean, and these numbers that you showed earlier, eh, they, we're, we're counting, there was 11,000 stops by a park ranger in a park. What the heck does that mean? You know, our parks, we're losing our parks. These, these peop- it's, I know Hardy Park, that they do not come down there in the morning, families, because they're too afraid of what they're going to find at the playground. So they have to wait and wait to use the park for their children, and they can walk there. That's, that's a shame, we just can't have that. We just keep putting it off. Now I heard you say that, oh, well, we better get this done before next meeting. I remember when I was, well, we have seven months to get this done and then three months to get this done. Now we're all ready to the, well, we better get it done by next meeting. I'm a retired chef. If I have a big Fourth of July, uh, event, I'm not going to wait till July 3rd to start planning it and to start thinking about it. You know, you need to, the, the fact that we don't have a plan, we don't have anything and just saw these numbers, which, you know, and now we're with this community court, maybe it's best to be next to a, a convenience store. They can get a referral and then a tall boy, Natty Ice, right next door. I mean, golly.
How about a slice and a Coke?
Yeah, there, yeah, anything. And then I hear, well, we got 10 beds here, we got 10 beds there. We can fill those 10 beds with what's out in front of the Publix on Andrews Avenue. You know, that's just that corner. Or at that bus stop for the number 40 bus with I take in front of the hospital on, uh, Andrews Avenue. 10, 10 is, is just not going to cut it. You know, we, we need to have a plan and we need to have one bad. And I tell you, in order to make an omelet, you got to break some eggs. And, and you know.
So what eggs are you suggesting we break?
I say with arrest, with, with this new law that we're going to have, with talking to Sheriff Tony, which actually enforcing things instead of just counting them and giving them a sandwich. You know, it's, uh, you know, all I heard here was a bunch of meringue and not a lot of pie. You know, you, you guys are, are great with that stuff, but when it comes to actually doing something, actually getting something done, actually, you know, to show us residents that we are making progress, because us residents, we know you're not making progress and it's going backwards.
All right.
And.
Thank you.
Come on, we need a plan and we, I guess now we need it before next meeting.
Okay. That's not what we said. We said the plan, wait, don't go away, we're ta- we're talking. We said before next meeting, we would like an understanding as to whether or not we can find a purpose for the building. This has nothing to do with solving the entire homeless problem. The plan was to, the idea was to assign to, to staff a, the responsibility of coming back to us with purposes for which we could perhaps use that building, uh, before we make the decision to purchase it or not purchase it. That's what that was about.
Then we are up against the wall with this new law taking place.
But not October 1st. October 1st, it takes effect, but the enforcement of it takes effect next year.
So we can, like I was talking to my friend, we can wait, you know? Now we got until January, so we're good. We'll talk about it in November.
But Ted, Ted, I don't want the public to get the impression that the cit- that the commission's been sitting on its hands. This statute was only passed this year, okay? It was a mandate that was unfunded by the state. So every city in Florida that has a homeless issue is scrambling to try to find solutions. And if you ask Commissioner Sturman, he's going to tell you that most cities are in the same position that we are.
Well, I didn't have any meetings with Lamar, but all I know is that we were waiting for either, uh, the Governor DeSantis, maybe he's going to, you know, not sign the order. Oh, we'll wait for the county, the county's got to do something. Oh, we'll wait for Sheriff Tony, we'll just let him arrest them. You know, I don't hear any actual plans from our city commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I just want to say that I, I don't agree with what you're saying because I think we have a plan. I, I would be, uh, incredulous to see all the other plans from the other 30 municipalities in Broward County, to see if they've appointed a person, appoint person, uh, as the homeless person, as we have an assistant city manager. This is a good plan. If you look at our, our ordinance that we're going to pass tonight, hopefully, uh, that actually takes it a step further. It seems to accomplish what you are asking for. We're going a step further in making our ordinance 24/7 in terms of enforcement. The state statute, correct me if I'm wrong, is just overnight. So we are taking those steps. So I don't know why you would think that we don't have a plan or why you would think that.
Because I'm listening.
I don't think you are listening. I don't think you are listening.
Well, we sent our point guy to California to study the homeless situation, which is probably the worst state for the homeless situation, and I guess maybe he was just studying on what not to do. Because, I mean, that seemed, how much money did we spend on, on that trip, a pointless trip to San Diego that we could use here on ourselves? Then you have $13 million. We said, well, 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 it's only $2 million from the city, we're only wasting $2 million of it. The other 11 million that we're wasting is government.
Okay, you're not listening to what's being said, you're just, you're just using this as a mouthpiece because you're campaigning and I think it's really unfair to this commission for you to make these accusations when we're moving step by step to try to find solutions for the community.
Let me tell ya.
So I thi-, I take offense at what you're saying, I take offense at what you're doing and your time is up, so thank you, Ted.
I was saying the same stuff at City Hall for years and I wasn't campaigning because these are the facts.
Okay, time is up. Thank you so much, we appreciate your input.
Alternative facts.
I'm a little late. I glanced at the backup, but I missed a lot of your presentation because I was meeting with the sprinkler guy because I got a $983 sprinkler, uh, water bill because there was a sprinkler leak at one of my properties. So, thanks for that. Um, as far as-
Is your grass green?
Is that, as green as everybody else's, I didn't get much juice out of it.
I'm sorry that that happened to you.
Hopefully it'll, it'll get reduced some.
Okay.
Um, so, you, you know, it's just sort of, I just say carrots and sticks. I mean, I could stand up here for five minutes and just say carrots and sticks over and over again. You, you gotta do something, don't do anything that's not a carrot or a stick. You know, like this commuter, uh, you know, homeless commuter thing where you're trying to coax people out of Margate and Tamarack to come, you know, sleep in our downtown somewhere. That's just a dumb idea. That doesn't do anything. That's not moving this, this mass of people out of our downtown. You're gonna solve their problems? I mean, I don't, I don't know what this, this community court thing, I've seen it, I've seen it go on and it, I, I don't know that it accomplishes anything. It seems like it's been going on for years and I heard some, I heard, I was listening to my phone a little bit before I got here, it just seems like your stats of it are not accomplishing anything. I, I know lawyers like it, the judges used to act like they were donating their time, is that true? Is, I, I feel like they're getting paid, you know, aren't they getting paid, right?
They're getting paid.
Okay, so like, before we spent $3 million to build them their, their dream little court so they could be air-conditioned, I mean, why don't you spend $3 million in unincorporated Broward and buy like three blocks and you can move your movable circus tent to each corner a, as needed and, and maybe draw some of the people from downtown out there. Maybe that could be a carrot, you know? And if you're not gonna pair this with free food and all your services, it's, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, this is just somewhere, they're gonna show up with their, their citation and crumple it up, they don't care, they're living on the streets. As far as this idea that, um, I, I'm wondering, what should we expect in the parks? Like, I have a park across from my house and I have a guy that goes there with a cart and 16, 14, 30 bags of stuff. Like, what should, what is, what should, as a citizen, what should we expect people to bring to the parks? Like, should you bring everything you own? Is that like a, a normal thing that we wanna encourage? Or should we have like a bag limit? I mean, I know you've, in the past, I've been against this idea of storage or something. I don't know that these people would u-, use storage, because if you're carrying 50 bags with you, you're, you're out of your mind. So if you could solve something that, like, I don't wanna see in the park across from my house, a cart with 40 bags on it every day with people laying, just sprawled out on the ground, you know, with like no purpose or nothing. Like, I don't know how you make that illegal. I mean, uh, you know, what, what do we do? But as far as this $3 million thing, that, that sort of sounds, if you wanna buy the land, buy the land, but don't mask it in this thing. And, and, and the CRA is hopefully ending in a year, you know, to somehow say like, well, the CRA is gonna make money from this or something, it's, I, I, where is this location exactly?
All right, thank you, Charlie.
What's the address?
Thank you, thank you. We're done.
It's hidden like John Herbst's address?
All right, we're done. Norby, Norby Belz.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Norby Belz. I'm the Vice President of the North Beach Restaurants and Shops and I live out by the beach and I represent nearly 100 businesses. And I've been working with Luisa's team, um, very eloquently for the last couple of years because we have a big problem in our neighborhood. And what I'm concerned about is, is twofold. I think we have this law coming out and we need to leverage it for what it is. It's actually the teeth, or as we put it, the, the stick that we can use, but we need to also have that carrot. Because I've been trying to help an individual, as we know, in our neighborhood off the streets for the last almost year and a half, um, and she's living at the Beach Community Center at night. So she will be impacted by this law because that is a public space. And what I'm concerned about is all of my businesses there who have done all the due diligence, we have the non, no trespassing sign, we worked with the city to get the no trespassing signs. I worry that we're gonna be playing whack-a-mole. You know, the game where we do it here, do it there, and this is just gonna make it worse. And I don't mean this as a pun to the individuals because these are human beings that are living on the streets. But when, when I look at our neighborhood and we come in with this new law, we're gonna remove this woman, um, from the Beach Community Center with the new law, right? Um, and if she doesn't want to go to a facility or somewhere else, she's just gonna be removed. Well, the next place she's gonna go is into our businesses, which I just got a call this morning with, with a, a woman-owned business who's had five incidences, now it's number six. And these are homeless individuals who are impacting a woman-owned business who have women climate coming in the morning for a Pilates class. We've had five incidences, now this is six this morning, number six. If we're moving them from public lands and we're not putting them in places where they can get, um, services, guess where they're gonna go? In, in non-public lands, which is our private property. And I know that our police are already extended way beyond what they can handle, um, and now we're gonna be having them, you know, do the, the policing of the homelessness. And I, I know we don't wanna use the, the arrests to arrest our way out of homelessness, we keep saying that, but the, the reality is the law is coming up on October 1st. Um, and I, I, I wanna commend you because I think today was the first time I hear, heard of a really good solution, which actually purchasing property, we could bring services together. Because I look at all these amazing programs that are working on homelessness, we've got a lot of great nonprofits. But it, to be honest, it's like herding cats. You've got a lot of people doing great things, but they're also competing over dollars to do the things we're doing. And anyone who works on grants, I worked on grants for many years, you know that, that half of the time you're spending is trying to report on the grant that you can't do the work on, and then you're competing against money. So it's a big problem. And I think today was the first time I heard a solution, it's, it's purchasing something that we can bring these services together. So I, I actually commend this on the time, I'm sorry, I'm at time, I commend you for this i- is as an action. But I also really need to think about our police because if, if they're understaffed now, imagine October 1st and more importantly, January 1st, when they are going to be bearing the brunt of this. So we really need to be looking at spaces we can bring people together and, and we need to look at resources that we can help our police and incentives for our nonprofits and our organizations to work together in collaboration with the city as well as, as the, um, the county. So-
All right, great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak on this topic? Okay, um, I have some comments that I'd like to make, but does anyone else from the commission wanna add anything? Yes, Commissioner Sturman?
Yeah, I'm gonna say quite a few things to begin with. First of all, let me just backtrack, I didn't weigh in yet, but I'll, uh, wanna add to that discussion about that $3 million purchase. Um, I think it's a great idea. I remember what we wanted to do with the stockade at one point was do something similar, have a homeless assistance center over there. And this is, uh, you know, like you were saying, Mayor, have everything under one roof, make it convenient and everything. There's no guarantee what in the world they're gonna do with this stockade, you're hearing things all over the board. But in the meantime, purchasing it and doing it ourselves at that location, I think it would be very wise to do. Um, I'm gonna have Chris come back up here. Chris, don't be afraid, come here, we're all friends. It's okay.
He won't bite.
Okay, um, and it just, I mean, hang on, I think, as I talk, I might reference you a couple of times, but I think when we talk about homeless, we have to divide it into three things, long-term, midterm, and short-term. Long-term, midterm, short-term. Long-term is actually increasing shelter beds. So you've been in some of the conversations that we've been in and, and, because you live in, you know the numbers right, probably off the top of your head. Salvation Army was, they're thinking of adding extra beds. Do you remember the numbers that they were talking about or long-term beds that they're thinking of adding, maybe in the hack? Various groups were, were adding capacity along the way, or you don't know off the top of your head?
Sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. I know Salvation Army is having conversations about adding some overnight respite type of emergency shelters. They're having those, I think, now. And so we're, we're waiting to hear what they say about that. I think there's a few beds here and there that are being eked out at the hacks, but not, not anything in great volume.
Well, they, well, maybe, I, you know, maybe I had met with them with, with my staff, Chief of Staff earlier, but there, there was some plans that they were gonna add actual more capacity, but not like thousands, maybe a few, like 100, 120 here, there. Uh, in the meantime, there's, there's intermediate, what do we do while they're waiting to build capacity? And then the immediate plan, uh, Susan, our city manager, had a great idea. And you have to look at these in terms of where does it fit in. One of the thoughts that was thrown out was, oh, we'll use vouchers for hotels, vouchers for homes, put homeless people in hotels. In and itself, it, it's ridiculous. However, if, you know, if it's something that's just a temporary thing while they're increasing capacity somewhere else, everything might be on the table. The sleeping in homes, I mean, it's not the answer to everything, but, you know, some of these things that could be, I mean, sleeping in cars rather, some of these things could be a piece of the whole big picture, everything has to be looked in totality. And the intermediate, um, we talked about pallet homes. We did have something that came across our desk, if you wanna share with that. The shelter, uh, the container homes was something very interesting that came across. One of the big issues that, with everything is where do you put them? And Chris was diligent looking for, um, for, uh, anything in the city, anything that we have in inventory, in the county, what the county has in inventory and private too. And the issue was, maybe there was somebody that was willing to purchase some storage areas, put container homes as opposed to pallet, like our individual homes, these are stackable, these are apparently very goo-, good, they're quick, they're not gonna take years to put up, and you could, you could house several hundred people on a couple acre site. And, um, your, just your thought on, on that topic?
Yeah, so it's not unlike the pallet home concept, it's, it's a different, um, structure that they use to build these things out. They use shipping containers and retrofit those in a way that can accommodate a living situation. So similar concept in that you, they're easy to install, they're, they're fairly quick to obtain and retrofit, and then they can be used as, uh, as living facilities. Shipping containers, as you know, a lot of, there's a lot of places that have used these and retrofitted these for different types of living situations. So similar concept to that, just more in line of a rapid rehousing type situation.
And, and Susan, on the immediate end, you, you talked about the, um, the aspirate and, um, if you wanna touch upon that very briefly too.
Yeah, I mean, looking at our emergency vendor who can stand things up pretty quickly, um, we're waiting to get some proposals from them on a standalone, you know, we called it emergency kind of respite bed. So it wouldn't be a shelter like a 24/7 shelter, more of when we encounter someone who needs to move along to, you know, be in compliance with the law, that we would have a bed to offer them in, in that situation. So we were looking at that, or they could stand something up in an existing, either warehouse or, or business district. So we're, we're looking at a couple, um, options that way. Again, so come October, January, whatever we, date we wanna pick, that we have an option to offer people, um, as, as far as, you know, if they're sleeping in the public areas.
So is everyone, since that's on the immediate, long-term, middle, immediate. This is not a shelter like, like Susan said, this is a couple of days till we could get them into community court. An alternative, you don't wanna start arresting your way out of homelessness and just something to, for a few days until we could get them plugged into the system. I think going forward, we kinda should make a couple of decisions. I mean, Chris is looking to say, hey, where do we start looking? Where do we go from here? What things are viable? Um, I think, we've talked about safe parking, safe storage, I think is a huge thing, I think every one of us likes that idea. People who, you know, need to go to work and don't wanna go to a facility because they don't wanna bring their belongings, this gives them options. A day respite, medical respite, I know Holy, um, Memorial has that, Broward's looking into that. Pallet homes, container homes. Land acquisition is always a big thing, that's gonna be one of our obstacles that we're looking for, and cost, that's another thing we're looking for. I think, um, what we should do is, uh, you know, as a consensus, hey, Chris, listen, don't take anything off the table now, look at the feasibility of what we could do, the costs involved and what we need to do to come across the finish line. I think that's some of the direction you're looking from us.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking for direction on this plan of action in terms of October 1st to December 31st, you know, are those items that you are comfortable with us spending time on, more time on really, and bringing back to you in a more formal proposal, um, format? Again, with January 1st and ongoing same thing, are those, are those, is there consensus on this plan in terms of what we've proposed to look at and bring back to you for consideration?
Okay. And, um, Mayor, I'll kick it back to you.
Okay, great. Anyone else wish to have any further comments?
One thing, Mayor. Not in opposition about purchasing that particular parcel that we're talking about, but also talking about, um, looking at another opportunity, how to fund it. So that could be part of the conversation as well.
Okay.
Again, my, my passion for the CRA, what we know still needs to be completed, um, regardless of the extension of the CRA or funding through, um, at best Fort Lauderdale.
Okay.
So that was my point when I started about this conversation, about the $3 million for that particular parcel, that building that's identified.
All righty, very good. Um, so, you know, we spend meeting after meeting, wringing our hands, woe is me, what are we gonna do? We have the state statute, we've gotta do something. And, uh, and I appreciate, you know, I think everybody in their own way, in their own measure, have been involved in trying to talk with others in the community, trying to come up with solutions, trying to see what would work best. And I don't think there's any perfect solution, but we have to start somewhere. And, um, so we've been talking about, um, how to respond to the statute. And one of the things we've done is we're coming up with our own ordinances to help refine the mandate that was contained within the statute so that we ourselves have the capacity within our ordinances to be able to enforce what's in the best interest of everyone in our community. And I hope we can move forward tonight and pass those ordinances so that it gives our law enforcement, uh, members the capacity and the ability to move forward and try to, uh, assist and try to resolve the problem. All right, so having said that, you know, we've, we've tried to think of, you know, everyone talks about pallet homes or, or container homes or whatever, but no one talks about location. So obviously, we've talked about location many times with the county about the stockade of real estate. The, the facilities they have there now are not suitable for inmates or homeless people. They've completely neglected them over the years, they are not, um, available for human, uh, human habitation. And even the county themselves realizes that they've neglected it and that for too long they thought it was gonna be able to accommodate their overflow capacity from the jail, and even that, it cannot do. So the idea would be hopefully for them to scrape the site and let's use that real estate in some, um, purposeful manner, which, which we need to have that conversation with them, but there, they have not yet come back to us with, with, uh, an invitation to have that conversation. So, um, given that, given that situation, with the, the stockade conversation is kind of off the table right now until they have a, a plan of themselves as to what they're gonna do, because it is their real estate even though it's within our city. So, but we do have real estate that's not in our city, that's in unincorporated Broward. And that real estate is the area right near the, um, the, what we call Broadview. And I've been talking with the city manager and others within our staff about perhaps placing pallet homes on the Broadview site, which is not anywhere near any of our neighborhoods, it's in an unincorporated Broward, and it's a place where I feel can accommodate anywhere between 50 and 100 pallet homes should we go in that direction. It would be an opportunity for us to get things started. Now, we it would still take several months before we're able to to get them manufactured and placed there, which is why the Asprey proposal may be very handy with for us because they're able to do something much more quickly to be able to provide us the shelter homes that we need going forward. So I propose now, have I proposed this to the county? Yes, I sent an email several weeks ago to the mayor of Broward County. That email was then forwarded to their county administrator, and we have not heard anything back from them, no response whatsoever. Maybe they're thinking about it, maybe they're not interested in it, maybe they are but don't know how to participate. But all I'm saying is that will give us some immediate relief. Another way to provide immediate relief, I thought, would be to work with the sheriff's department and to provide an isolated area within the county jail, a separate apart from the other inmates, where we could house homeless people that we we find in violation of this new statute. I know Sheriff Tony has indicated in a newspaper op-ed that, no, 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 we're not going to, you know, bring homeless people to the to the jail. You know, the fact is that that I believe that that point of view has been modified, but and we need to consider the jail as an opportunity to take homeless people off the streets and out of the elements and put them in a controlled environment, again, away from the rest of the of the inmate population, but to be able to at least try to comply with the with the statute and with our new ordinances in order to move forward and try to address the situation. The benefit of doing this is to also have social services available at that location to be able to work with them on mental illness, on addiction treatment, on any other aspect of their condition that brought them to homelessness in order for us to have them there rather than hoping that they'll show up at some event because they've been given a voucher or they've been given some sort of referral that allows them to participate in the system. In this way, we have them there, we can work with them directly, we could probably even provide the services on site, which would allow us to really take a giant step forward in trying to resolve this problem that we have in our city and that other cities are facing. So this is not trying to criminalize homelessness, this is not trying to jail our way out of homelessness. It happens to be a facility that we have at our disposal, there is capacity within the jail, it can be done, and I feel that this is something that that should be considered and should be done. And I would hope that our police department could be given direction by this commission to be able to move forward in that regard. We cannot continue to sit here and wring our hands and say, woe is me, I don't know the answer, let's pass, kick the can down the road. We can't kick the can anymore. We have we have a mandate that's been assigned to us by the state legislature, we're going to have ordinances that we're going to pass that are going to give us the toolkit in which to work with homeless people to try to get them out of their situation. We do not have capacity, we do not have housing capacity, we don't have enough money to house everybody in a hotel or a vacation rental or any of Charlie King's houses. The point is that we have to do something. And let us collectively agree on something so that we can give direction to our city staff, whether it be the civilian staff or the police department, to be able to move forward and work to try to to mitigate the homeless situation that we have in our city. And that's my point of view, and I'm hoping that by tonight we can continue this conversation and think about it a little bit, and let's see if we can find a path forward for all of us to to follow. And that concludes my remarks. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I would just like to add a little bit. So I've had the opportunity to speak with Sheriff Tony subsequent to our last meeting.
Tell us.
So he's interested in moving in a slightly different direction with respect to the stockade. He's not in favor of what's been proposed in terms of scraping it and turning it into a pallet home village. He believes that the stockade is needed up there. What he would like to do, and I actually think there's a lot of merit in his in his plan, is to use it as an intake facility. So right now, when our officers arrest somebody, they bring them down to the main jail, they're almost immediately transported down to Broward General for an evaluation. And our officer then has to wait down there for them while they're having their physical evaluation, and then bring them back to the jail for further processing. And, you know, sometimes that's a three, four plus hour endeavor. So what the sheriff would like to do is be able to have representatives from Broward Health on site at the stockade, do the initial intake and processing there and then the evaluations, and then if they need medical transport, take them down to Broward General if they need to be, you know, further evaluated. And if not, then they could be taken down to the main jail and processed in there. So it would be a processing center. He said it will obviously, to your point, the facility needs some refurbishing, it needs to it needs to be enhanced to perform that function, and that will entail the county providing the funding to be able to do that. But I think it's really a worthwhile solution that we need to explore.
In theory, I agree with you, but in reality, their budget has already been set, it's already been approved, and it doesn't include any money for something like that. And the problem is they're playing a tap dance between the sheriff's department and the county government as to how much more funding they're going to give the sheriff's department. We cannot afford to wait at all. That's why I want to buy that building downtown, because we can use that as a processing facility. We can use that as an intake facility. While the county is figuring out what they're going to do with the stockade, they've had months, if not years, to figure out what they're going to do with the stockade. And honestly, Sheriff Tony has been telling me for years that they they never expected to use the stockade for the overflow because they have a deficit in terms of occupancy in the county jail. They have plenty of room for 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 the use for which it's been intended, for which it's intended. So I can't, we can't wait for another government to figure out what they're going to do. We, as a city of Fort Lauderdale, have to take the bull by the horns and do what we need to do because we're going to be caught in the trap of waiting for the county or any other government to help us through this process.
I don't think they're mutually exclusive, though, Mayor, so.
You took the words right out of my mouth, John. I was going to say the exact same thing.
As was said previously, we have to attack this from a lot of different directions. There is no one solution, there's no two solutions. And I agree with you, actually, you know, as Sheriff Tony and I were discussing, we've only used the jail once, the stockade once, in the last 15 years. And that was when we had an electrical failure at the main jail. We've never actually used it in all the years that I've been here for overflow purposes. So the idea that we need it for that, you know, dates back to a consent decree, I get that. But we've never actually had to use it for that purpose. So we could use it for some of these other things. And yes, you're right, I agree that that there is a strained relationship between the sheriff and the county as it relates to the cost overruns on the training facility. If there is any money put into the stockade, I suspect the county is probably want to control the actual build out and construction. Candidly, I don't care who builds it, as long as it gets built. To your point about using the building downtown as the intake facility, that's not going to work because that's not a secure facility. The people that are being brought in are people who are being arrested. We can't take people who are being arrested over to the convenience store. I don't think that's a feasible solution. I don't think the sheriff would would be supportive of that. But again, you know, not meant to suggest that we can't do all of the things you're talking about. Let's look at the the site that you're referring to in Broadview. By the way, that's not the one that we're engaging with the housing authority to build on, are you? So I can tell you, based on my conversations with former Senator Geller, that that neighborhood will not, will not, I'm just letting you know, will not accept what you're proposing. They fought the housing authority for the better part of four years on getting them to put what has currently been approved over there. And the only way they were able to get them to agree to is to include a single-family townhome component as part of it. Because, as you know, the the housing authority typically wants to do, you know, the most multifamily density they can get so they can house the largest number of people. Senator Geller, that's his district, so unless you've had a conversation with Senator Geller about that, I can tell you that is a nonstarter. That is a nonstarter, Mayor. I suggest, seriously, I've been involved with these conversations with the with the Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority for the last three years on this, and I know how Senator Geller shut that down. And they've only just recently reached an agreement on moving forward with that project. So I'd love to actually hear some conversation because I think we're under contract with the housing authority for that.
So before you answer, Susan, you know, when you say shut that down, that just means that he would raise the issue with his permitting department, who has the authority to either grant or not grant permits for building in that area. So if the county wants to step forward and say that we're against finding solutions for homeless people, then I'd like them to I'd like them to make those statements. We are finding solutions, we are figuring out figuring a way to make this happen. It would not create a negative imposition upon the neighborhood if we do it on a smaller scale. And someone said earlier tonight, I think it was you, no, it's someone who said earlier tonight that if we're going to make an omelet, we have to crack some eggs, well.
That was Chef Ted, if I recall.
That was Ted and Sarah.
Ted, well said. The point is that we need to take action, okay? And we need to move forward. If there's some sort of disagreement with the county, let them step forward and make that disagreement, but we can still have to move forward. We can't wait for them to make decisions on the stockade, John, because we've waited for how long for them, for how many, I can't tell you how many times I have met with them since the first day I became mayor, to say we need to do something there. The only time the the county has ever worked with us on a homeless solution was in eliminating the encampment in front of their library. That we did within the first few months of when when I took office, when whoever was on the commission at the time. And it ended there, it never it never followed through. We never did anything other than just eliminate the encampment. But we can't, and look at this, fence is still around there, they still have done nothing to create a an urban experience that that, you know, used to be there. It used to be a nice plaza, there was a restaurant in that building, I mean, it was a nice experience. Nothing has been done for the all the seven, almost seven years since I've been mayor. So so honestly, I want to rely on the county, I want to partner with the county. I've reached out time and again with the county, and each time we get no answer, we get no response. This city needs to take the bull by the horns and to do something, and and we have to do something quickly. And these are things that I think that are doable, and I think we need to move forward as quickly as we can, that's all I'm saying.
And I don't disagree with the proposals, Mayor, but I think if the county is is stymieing the proposal for the stockade, if we need the county's, you know, agreement to move forward on the stockade, and as you said, they withheld that for the better part of 20 years, we also need the county's approval to do something in unincorporated Broward County because we don't control that. We can't just go in there and set up a pallet home community in an area that's not within Fort Lauderdale city limits. We're still going to need the county. Either way, we need the county to get on board with whatever we want to do. And I agree, ask them for everything, ask them for everything in the kitchen sink, go for it. But I wouldn't expect that we're going to be able to set this up January 1st and have this up and running until we've had those conversations with the county, because I don't see how the county is going to adopt a different approach with respect to that than they've shown with respect to some of the other things. I'm optimistic that you can, you know, get get an agreement out of them, throw it out there and see what they say, but.
I have thrown it out there and I've gotten no answer whatsoever, not a yes, not a no, not a nothing.
On the Broadview parcel?
Yeah.
Well, and then and then let's go back, though. Like I said, we're under contract right now with the Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority.
Yes, we are, but there are portions of that parcel that would be available. And Chris has also identified a couple other parcels in a couple other places, one in Incorporated Broward and another one here. So again, what we've said is we're vetting everything.
With that site plan, so I've looked at that site plan, I've looked at, I've had multiple meetings with the original for-profit developer that wanted to work over there, and then I've had meetings with with the housing authority multiple times. What's left over? Because the whole design of that site plan was to meet the concerns of that, that's a single-family neighborhood residence. By the way, if I remember, state law says you can't put pallet homes next to a residential neighborhood.
And again, we're looking at everything, but they.
But no, I mean, that's that's a straightforward one. So the state's new legislation, the anti-camping legislation that that creates a framework for the homeless encampment specifically says it can't be adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
So I don't know that this would qualify as an encampment. Chris, is that, I mean.
It walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, tell me it's not a duck.
It's not an encampment.
It's not an encampment? Pallet homes are not not an encampment?
They're homes. They're small homes. What else if we put a trailer park there? Same thing, they're homes.
They would maintain that they're not an encampment. We're just so, it's going to be an encamp, we just don't call it an encampment. All right.
No, 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 that's not, okay.
All right, a couple of things. First of all, I think, John, I agree with you, they're not mutually exclusive, what they want to possibly do at the at the stockade, you know, we've talked about that an awful lot at the beginning several months ago, and we sort of went by the wayside. But Broward General was very much on board with with your idea, you know, and if that was, you know.
What idea?
No, John's idea that having a decampment, having a, you know, intake with some a medical aspect to it.
It's a sheriff's idea.
Oh, so that's that's good news to, I mean, I don't know what they're going to do there. But the other thing is, I did hear that Pompano, the jail, has some issues, and they're going to have to do some repairs, remodeling, and so the the stockade might actually have to be used sooner rather than later.
But it can't be used at all.
So they might have to do something.
It's been completely deteriorated to the point that it can't be inhabited. You've been there.
Yeah, I know, I know. But but, okay, so like I mentioned, not mutually exclusive, I'd love to go ahead with the $3 million project, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to look at what they might want to do with the stockade, John, so.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
All right. And Mayor, before we do move, say, let's go ahead with that $3 million project, I would just like the opportunity for staff to present to the Flagler Civic Association and the other neighborhoods around there, because I think that's really important before we make any kind of decisions like that.
Exactly. All right, Susan, did you want to add anything to this conversation that you haven't already stated?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for all the hard work they've been doing on putting this plan together, and it really is our plan. Again, I don't expect it to be perfect, and we will continue to refine as we go along. So looking forward to working with everyone here on the diocese and in the community to, you know, come up with solutions.
I too want to thank staff. I know you put a lot into this. Where's Louisa? There you are, okay. And Chris and everybody else, and and all of our homeless outreach team. I know you, it's a very difficult and oftentimes thankless position that you're put in because between the resources and the politics, it's very, very difficult to accomplish the mandate that we put out there for you. So thank you for all the work that you tried to do.
And Anthony, too. I mean, he's still is helping out.
Anthony who? Okay, that's CF1, no one else has signed up to speak, and that concludes our conference report. We do have conference reports, I mean, city commission reports. We can probably start on that and then go to the executive closed-door session at 4:30, right? Okay, so why don't we start with commission reports? Commissioner Herbst, do you have any reports? Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes, I have a couple of things I would like to share.
Okay, great.
Being able to share that some of the things, activities that I was able to take part in since our last commission meeting. On Thursday, September the 5th, I did attend the Broward Legal Cities Board of Directors meeting. As discussed in our our last conversation, I did at that meeting bring up the conversation about our cities within the county joining together to attack and approach and stand together regarding the homeless situation with 1365. I did stand, I did explain what we were, our challenges is and how we need to stand as a county. In the room, Hollywood and Hollendale, Pompano was not there, but those two particular cities did take to the conversation. Other than that, that was basically the feedback, which supported what you had originally said. So I wanted to report that I did do as I said I would. I would go to that meeting and I would represent and share the necessity that we needed to stand as a county to resolve the county, our overall homeless situation. Also, on Friday, September the 6th, I had an opportunity to attend the Fleet Week Community Kickoff, the conversation about Fleet Week. Fleet Week is coming back to Fort Lauderdale.
Yes.
Hey, that's applause, y'all.
Thank you for bringing it home.
Wake up, wake up, wake up. At that particular meeting, Rufus James from FFC was there with us. The presentation was amazing, they're embracing and they are happy to be back in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So this is an opportunity with all those entities within our city to be a part of the conversation. So this was, it was inviting, and I was glad that I was able to attend.
Is this going to be usually at the same time or the week before the the airshow? They still plan to do it around the same time?
They're they're kind of still trying to tweak that because there's something with, I believe, this this year's school year calendar, so they haven't really identified the week, but that is the goal. Okay, so looking forward to that as well. Moving forward a little bit more, Monday, September the 9th, I did extend the monthly Ahab meeting, which I'm a part of that, on that board with these neighbors from the community who are appointed. Routine meeting, really productive. Also, in that afternoon, I had a opportunity to attend the Rock Island Homeowners Association meeting, and they have some concerns that I want to bring out so we can address them overall. I've shared a couple of these with Susan's and with some of the others, but I did say I would bring it to the complete floor. There is concerns about the 19th Street, Northwest 19th Street corridor between 31st Avenue and 21st Avenue. Along that quarter, there are a couple of what's considered to be music houses, not necessarily clubs, but music activity that is going on after hours. So that was a large complaint that has been going on that was indicated to me. And what we're hoping to do is get with the code, nighttime noise code, and go out and see what's going on, hear it, and then move forward to address it. Also, on Northwest 19th Street, that same area, it was indicated that the lighting, the street lighting there is extremely poor. So we want to see what we can do to address getting brighter lighting on that quarter. And then specifically, at Northwest 24th Street and 24th Avenue. Um, they're telling me that the street light there has been out for months. The concern is it is a bus stop for the kids that go to, the kids that catch the bus for school in the mornings. And they're concerned about their safety. So, um, I'm not sure if that is one of the lightings that, um, parks and wrecks manage. But if we could find out, um, and get that, um, replaced as soon as possible. And also in that same area, 19th Street, um, it's about, um, 30th Avenue, I believe, where the Family Dollar sits. Um, there's an alleyway there and the alleyway, um, there's a lot of activity that this is not new, but it's a conversation and action that needs to be taken. We've talked about this before. But that alleyway, um, there's, um, what's been cited by the neighbors, drug activity, prostitution. Um, even also, um, individuals that are, um, in a sense, camping out in that alleyway. So if we could also do what's necessary to address that. And in that neighborhood overall, Rock Island neighborhood is between, um, 19th Street, Northwest 19th Street and approximately, um, 26th Street bordered by 31st Avenue and 21st Avenue. And a lot of complaints about, um, trash pickup. They're saying when they come through the neighborhoods, there's a disregard. Um, they're picking up the cans. They're placing them everywhere. Trash is flying everywhere.
Welcome to every neighborhood.
Yeah, but you know, we regardless, it's not acceptable. They got a nice contract that needs to be corrected. Um, not acceptable. So if we can get that, um, addressed and, um, previously what, um, I think I talked about this probably a year ago when we was having this complaint in one of the other neighborhoods. Um, I had asked for, um, at that time, it was through our customer service number, the 8,000 number. If we could see those complaints that have come in regarding that to validate that this is an issue. I do encourage, um, now that we have fix-it FTL, it's a little different, but I would encourage the neighbors to utilize the 8,000 number to make that type of report. So we could have that, that data to say that what they're saying is, is supported. Okay? So hopefully if we can do that, just to see the numbers, because again, wherever it is in the city is unacceptable. Okay? On Wednesday, September the 11th, the 9/11, um, re- um, remembrance ceremony. Um, the mayor, vice mayor and myself, we were able to, um, attend a, a heartfelt, beautiful ceremony that was held at the Firehouse Museum, the Fireman's Museum. And, um, this was my second opportunity and again, it was very moving and, um, it was a, it was a great day. So, um, thank you for, and the invitation and also coordinating that.
And it didn't rain.
And it did not rain. It did not. Also, um, sharing on Saturday, September the 14th, 2024. Um, we had one of our neighbors birthday parade. She was 100 years old, Ms. Rosebud Jackson. And, um, with the fire department and law enforcement, um, and also a proclamation from the city. Uh, we were able to acknowledge and celebrate Ms. Rosebud's, um, 100th year birthday. Okay? Couple items that I wanted to discuss and, and bring to the attention, um, to the diocese and to, um, city overall. I, um, was excited, you know, I've been advocating since I got here to, um, have the roadways on Six Strong Boulevard, um, repaved. They look wonderful. However, last week with the Stormwater Project, we came through and we gutted the road. So this was a question that, um, I've asked before. And I, I, I believe it's something that we could do better coordination with because I know that there's times that, you know, the county comes in and do whatever they're going to do. But there's have to be a way to remedy this. Um, question, how much did we just spend to repave the roads on Six Strong? Could I get an answer for that, please? Okay. Okay. My concern with that, okay? We just did that beautiful job. This, the, the paving still need to go down, go back on the roadway. Uh, we can't forget that. Okay? The favors need to go back. Um, however, again, you know, we knew that the Stormwater Project was coming. And then we come in and it's about, um, it's the, the length of the intersection there. So now the road was smooth. Now again, we have bumps in the road. So this is very discouraging. So, um, what I'm, where I'm going with this, um, do we not have a protocol? Do we not, um, have in place the scheduling of what's coming before we do a particular project?
We do. Um, I know that the paving was, went through, I think it was CDBG grant dollars. So there might've been some timing issues related to that as far as when the money had to be spent by, um, versus when the Stormwater Project was ready to go. But we could get, just let, let me just go back and, and get a full analysis of, of what. But certainly, again, those are both city projects.
Okay.
So we should have been able to coordinate, but I'll get you back some answers.
Okay, wonderful. And then also regarding the Stormwater Project, have, uh, some complaints and some questions I would like as well answered. Um, we're getting through my office the complaints about, um, storing of the equipment and supplies on private property without permission. And then the question is, am I getting paid for storage on my property? So, um, they, there is storage of, um, storm drains or whatever the equipment is without permission. So we want to know how we can get that rectified. And also I have a question. Um, is this a situation, um, in other parts of the city? Is this something that the other commissioners have an issue with when there is any type of roadway construction in the, in the other cities, in the other districts? Is this unique to District 3?
Well, anytime we had a complaint, and I know we've addressed one in your district prior.
Yes.
That there was construction and they weren't doing the, you know, the appropriate screening around that. Um, and yes, certainly if they're storing, you know, equipment, they need to be contracting with, you know, a private property owner and paying them and also screening it.
And, and, and it's been more than one because we had the one with the church. Don't forget about the church. They just set up camp on the church to the point that the Sunday that they were having service, they could not even get into their parking lot. So this is really an issue that we need to address. So whoever is, um, the property manager in the area, we need to make sure that this is not a, a ongoing practice.
I mean, the project manager should be looking at it and we'll, and we'll get back to you and make sure that that's taken care of.
Okay. And, um, let's see here. Okay. You'll get back with me about how much was spent to do that. Okay, great. Upcoming events. So I'm, I'm, I'm moving on to the fun stuff now. Uh, upcoming events on Thursday the 19th, the Sprout Bus Mobile Market will be again at New Hope Baptist Church. That's 1221 Northwest 6th Street in Fort Lauderdale. It starts at 4:00 PM, ends at 6:30. This is rain or shine. Okay? So we're inviting, um, this is opportunity citywide. I talk about this with great passion. Um, the, we know food costs is affecting everyone. So on this particular, uh, mobile market, fruits and vegetables ranging from $1 to $5. It's an excellent opportunity. If this isn't something you're interested in, please share it with someone else because we want the city to benefit. Also on Friday, the 20th, it's, um, Carter Park Jams, um, at Carter Park starting at 7:00 PM, ending at 10:00 PM. Let's come out, have a great community, um, good time, great concert and play. Also on Thursday, September 25th, CRA Advisory Committing Meeting. This is a public meeting asking for community input regarding the CI, the CRA. This will be at the YMCA. Um, that address is 1409 Six Strong Boulevard. The meeting starts at 6:00 PM, ends at 8:00. And when we had the last meeting, we were right on schedule. So very respectful of your time. Also on Thursday, September, no, that's not right, the September 26th, um, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, there is a community meeting regarding the Davy Master Plan. This is also, um, considered, um, the miss, mixed-use zoning conversation. And that's also, um, a community meeting and that will be at the DDS Building, um, 700 Northwest 19th Avenue. So that is what I have this, this day. Thank you for listening.
All right, great. You know, you might, some of those things that like, like street issues and light, light bulb issues and things like that. You might want to just talk with staff directly.
Um, I agree, but also I do that because my neighbors want to make sure that I'm doing it. Um, it's a transparency for me.
Okay.
It's not to, um, do anything outs anyone in the community. But my, my community wants to know that I am addressing their issues and I use my time for that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, and Mayor, don't worry. I do tell, uh, all of my complaints to city staff all the time. They're very well aware of that. So, uh, I'm going to skip all of those right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, thank you. Wednesday, September 4th, um, thank you to the Victoria Park Civic Association for the excellent candidate forum that you hosted for Mayor District 2 and State Representative. Well done. Um, again, always appreciate that community, uh, passion and the, the sharing of ideas. That same night, um, actually just really close to where we were in Victoria Park was a one-way pairs study public participation meeting, uh, that's dealing with Andrews Avenue and, uh, 3rd Avenue. I want to get some reports from staff about that because I'm hearing nothing positive from the community about that project. Uh, so I really want to make sure that we're apprised of where we are with that. Um, doesn't have to be today, but we do need to know what's going on. Because all I'm hearing, um, is negativity about that proposal. So we do need to get an update. Where is that project? Um, what does it look like happening with that? Um, again, I think that will be very helpful to all of us.
I think it's just in the, in the study stage right now, right?
Well, I, I don't know. I just want to, well, we did have that first city public participation meeting, um, on the 4th. So it's important that we just know about it and we hear about it. And, um, I think the community will be happy to know that as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thursday, September 5th, we had the ribbon cutting for the first phase of the reimagination of Bahia Mar at the Marina Village. Um, I will tell you, living on the Barrier Island and driving by that location regularly, uh, it is amazing what an incredible destination that has become already. Um, with that ferry, the shorely, and then all of those food kiosks, uh, introducing our city to many of the Miami restaurants. Um, it's packed, uh, a very young crowd. Um, and I will say that I would recommend now because of the popularity of that project, um, obviously people are parking right across the street, um, in the, uh, city parking lot. We need to have some security there. We need to have, uh, more rangers there. We need to just control that a little bit more so that we don't have any episodes. Also with people crossing the street a lot, none of them, not all of them are going down to the, um, to the crosswalk by the pedestrian bridge that connects, but that's becoming a real hotspot. So we just have to anticipate that and we have to make sure that we're monitoring it. Uh, and then we're providing, you know, security and that our park rangers are there. I'm sure that, um, our pa- our parking revenue is going to see a nice jump, uh, in that parking lot because hundreds of people are parking there now every night, uh, that normally did not park there before.
Yeah. And Vice Mayor, yeah, I went and visited a couple of weekends ago and noticed the same thing. Folks just basically throwing their children over that fence and jaywalking across. We spoke to the folks at TAM and in a short term, they're going to be putting signage, directing people to the crosswalks and then working with FDOT on some longer-term solutions.
That'd be great. That was going to be my next comment about possibly working with FDOT. Uh, we see A1A as a state road. Whatever we can do, I would just rather us anticipate this rather than having to react to a bad situation, uh, at some point in time. Again, though, congratulations, the ribbon cutting was excellent, great crowd. Um, it's just a fun place. Uh, and I think people are really enjoying it just as a place to hang out. Uh, Friday, September 6th, um, one of my favorite elementary schools, uh, in the city, especially in District 2, is Northside Elementary. Um, this is a great, great little school built in 1927. Uh, we don't have many schools in our city built in 1927. Uh, it's a great Mediterranean revival structure architecturally, uh, just a cool place, cool place. And the kids are precious and adorable. Uh, we did a back-to-school supply event there.
Which school, where is this?
Northside Elementary.
Oh, Northside, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, just, um.
Yep, I know where it is.
Just behind, uh, Hot Dog Heaven and Warfield Park, that area right there. Um, and.
It's for sale, you know, Hot Dog Heaven.
Yes, I do know. Maybe you can buy it.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, moving right along, uh, the kids really loved, absolutely loved the fact that we were there. Um, it's not one of our wealthiest schools. It's not a school where everything is possibly provided like some of our schools are. Um, and therefore the need was really great. Um, we asked the principal to come up with a wish list for the teachers and for the students. Now that school has been rolling for a little while, uh, what did the kids need? Um, and, uh, that was all supplied. The principal was absolutely thrilled. She said, "Thank you." Um, and, uh, we work with Blue Line Solutions and we work with the police department. I want to thank the police department, uh, for that day and Blue Line Solutions. Um, every single thing on that wish list was supplied for those kids and also the teachers. Uh, there was such an amount of appreciation and a lot of smiles. It was just really a very heartwarming day. Uh, a great little building, great principal, uh, great faculty, uh, and it's always a pleasure to be there. I, I've attended several readings. Uh, we do, uh, readings with the kids there in the police department. Uh, great program. Uh, thank you very much to everyone who was involved in that. Um, I want to thank the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations for their District 2 and mayoral debate on Wednesday, September 10th. Again, always great to let, uh, folks in the city know what's going on and hear from people. Uh, a good amount of sharing of ideas. So thank you, uh, Mary and to the entire council, uh, for doing that as well as a great public service, uh, for our city. Um, Thursday, September 11th, Commissioner Beasley Pittman already mentioned, but yes, that 9/11, um, ceremony at the Fire and Safety Museum, another 1920s structure, again, Mediterranean revival. That one, actually, the architect was Francis Obreau, uh, one of our most famous architects in the city of Fort Lauderdale in our history. Uh, a great place, that museum, if you've never been there, you really need to take a tour of it. Um, always a very moving ceremony. Um, and, um, I, I just find it very rewarding. Uh, and that really is the place where you need to be, um, on, on 9/11. Um, after that, uh, we did have another great event, um, over at the Fire Station 49. Uh, the Veterans Trust, uh, worked, uh, with several local organizations. There's a great mural right there on the face of, uh, Fire Station 49 facing Seabreeze Boulevard. Um, and it's really a tremendous addition, uh, and I'm so happy that that is there right now. Saturday, September 14th, um, again, I want to thank, uh, our police department and our South Middle River Civic Association. Uh, that is a hardworking group that board of directors for that neighborhood. Um, that morning on Thursday's, uh, I'm sorry, Saturday, September 14th, uh, we did another, uh, front porch roll call. Uh, it's a great way for the neighborhood to really, uh, interact with all of the police that service that particular area, that particular district. Uh, everyone is always appreciative, uh, of those roll calls and always very appreciative of the service that our police provide. Uh, we doubled up that day. We didn't just do the police roll call, but we also did, um, the Green Year Routine Plant Giveaway. Uh, that's a great program where the neighborhoods get funding, uh, and help to help with landscaping, help to green the neighborhoods. Uh, so we did both of those, um, on that day. Uh, that evening, this past Saturday, as I mentioned earlier today, the Broward Sierra Group held its fifth annual award banquet. Um, congratulations to all the folks that received those awards. And as I mentioned today, uh, all of those high school kids that we saw that program, uh, were in attendance, actually receiving an award for their work, uh, as high school kids, uh, caring about, uh, protecting and preserving, um, our natural environment. Uh, this morning I had the pleasure of speaking to a group that I never spoke to before. Um, it's the New River Business Exchange. Uh, it's a great group of small businesses that network. They're mostly located downtown. Um, and they get together and they support each other and they ref- refer business to each other. Um, they meet twice a month. Uh, great little group. Again, the New River Business Exchange. And we met at the Tower Club, um, early this morning. I wanted to say congratulations to them, uh, as well for the work that they do. There's a lot coming up in the next two weeks. I'm not going to go through all of that. I'll report out in our first meeting in October. But I did want to mention something that Commissioner Beasley Pittman mentioned about the CRA meeting on Sept- the CRA meeting on September 25th, and hopefully we can look at our calendar a little bit better. At that same exact time, our city is doing a presentation on the proposed parking garage in Holiday Park. Now, that affects part of the CRA really close across the street there in Flagler Village, so I don't know why we're doing that on the exact same night, at the exact same time. The Chamber of Commerce is also doing a candidate's forum that night. I mean, how many things do we have to have happening at the exact same time on the exact same day? It's difficult. It's difficult to attend these things. It's difficult for me. I want to be there. I, I, I know people that also would like to attend that CRA meeting, but they also want to attend and hear what's the latest and greatest is with regards to the proposed parking garage in Holiday Park.
We'll work on making some changes.
I really appreciate that.
There's also the historic marker unveiling at the Parker.
I, I don't know if that's the same night, September 25th?
Wednesday, September 25th at 4:00.
Oh, but that's much earlier. That's at 4:00, right?
4:30. Between 4 and 5.
Right. That I'm talking about a little bit later. These are evening. Yeah, that's also happening that day. It's just crazy. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, 4:00 is it? It's at 4:00, I think, the historical marker at the Parker Playhouse. It's just a little difficult to, you know, I want to attend, and I'm, other elected officials want to be a part of these events, but we just need to space it out a little bit. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Tom, can I, can I allow Commissioner Sturman to do his presentation, or do we have to suspend what we're doing and go to? Okay.
Okay, I'll be quick.
Take your time. Take your time. Go ahead.
That concludes my report.
Okay. All right, just a few things that haven't already been mentioned. So, on September 5th, Vice Mayor talked about the Bahia Mar Marina Village opening at the Bahia Mar site. I know this has been a long time coming, and I know there's been a huge investment by the developers to, to have that happen, and it was exciting to see the popularity of that, of that new Marina Village. It was on Deco Drive, and I mean, it just became a really exciting moment. I hope the popularity continues. It's a great venue, and love to see more and more of that happening on the beach.
Mayor, that's been trending. It's been trending on social media, so.
It has, yeah.
It has been. It really has been.
Because it's really cool, you know? It's a cool place, good looking. And when it, when, when the weather gets better, it'll be a really nice place to hang out on the, on the shorely. On September, the shorely, yes. Also, on September 5th, I attended the Brazil Independence Day Event at the Tower Club. Actually, I had to go home and change my shirt, because I was soaked from that Bahia Mar event. Very great opportunity to meet with the Council General from Brazil and all the Brazilian business owners and people who live in and around Fort Lauderdale, who continue to celebrate the Brazil independence, and, and we continue to make strong connections with the Brazil community. On September 7th, I attended the Diamond Ball Gala for BRCA Strong. This is a, an organization which is focused on research and survivor assistance for those who are suffering from breast cancer or other gynecological cancer. So, at the Westin on Fort Lauderdale Beach. Great turnout. September 11th, yes, we once again took a moment out of our lives out to, to remember the, those who died in September 11th back in 2001. I'm happy that our community continues to, to have this event, and our hats off to the, to the people of our community who keep us safe day in and day out, both, both the firefighters and the members of the Police Department. That same evening, I attended an event at, at Tap 42, it was the Harvard Alumni Association, Welcome to Your City. This is an event which the Harvard Alumni Association has in different, different places in different years. They chose Fort Lauderdale to have their conclave, and it was really nice to be able to speak with the group and to welcome them to our city, and many of them already live here, but certainly the rest of them wish they could. Let's see. So, Sunday night, I attended a fushu daiko performance at the Broward, not at the Broward, at the Parker Playhouse. We did a flag exchange with the Japanese Council General with, from the city of Wako there, and this is part of the Sister Cities Program. We do not have a Sister City with Japan. Hopefully, this will initiate any progress in that regard. Again, the, the Council General, General was there. It was a great reception that we had for him, and if any of you have never been to one of these fushu daiko performances, it's one of those drum things, and it pounded your head until, till I had to leave after the intermission. I walked out with the, with the Council General, because it's really an amazing performance, a lot of great talent, but certainly takes a lot out of you to, to listen to the event.
Mayor, could I just add to that? It takes a lot more to actually participate in that, so I used to train with fushu daiko.
Oh, did you?
Yes, I did.
It's not easy.
It's not.
No. So, let's see. All right, so that's about it. We'll, we'll move on, and does anyone else have anything further they'd like to add to their comments? If not, then we will conclude the conference meeting. Oh, well, unless City Manager, do you have any report you'd like to make?
Just one quick report. I reported on Dottie Mancini Park last time. We continue to have those negotiations with the North Broward Hospital District, so I don't have anything to bring to you today, and as always, I remain optimistic and hopeful that we will one day.
Okay. All right, and, Mr. City Attorney, yes?
Now you have to announce.
Yeah, I'm going to do that. I'm going to. Okay, so the conference meeting is now concluded, and now we are at the public meeting, and at this time, the City Commission shall meet privately to conduct discussions between the Acting City Manager, the City Attorney, and the City Commission relative to pending litigation pursuant to Section 286.011-8 Florida statutes in connection with the following matter. Mark Cabesina et al. versus the city of Fort Lauderdale. A present at the Attorney-client session will be myself, the Vice Mayor Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Pamela Beasley Pittman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Warren Sturman, Acting City Manager Susan Grant, City Attorney Thomas Ansborough, Deputy City Attorney Duane Spence, Outside Counsel Hudson Gill, and Certified Court Reporter from Bailey Enton Court Reporting. The estimated length of the session will be approximately 20, excuse me, 30 minutes. So, may I ask everyone to please clear the room, so we can have our closed-door session? We'll take a five-minute break.
Where are we meeting?